Call the uh city county planning commission into order for a special zoom call meeting January seventh, twenty twenty one. And Jessica, would you please call the role?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn? Commissioner Blackburn? I believe she's muted.
Shannon, you're muted.
She said she's frozen.
Oh, okay.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Richie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Runner? Chair Warren?
Thank you, Jessica. Uh Hamp, would you call our uh staff in?
I would, I would be happy to, uh Mr. Warren. I request that you order that the record tonight include all statutory and regulatory provisions. The commission's entire file for each application on tonight's docket and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you administer the oath to those witnesses.
Do you swear to tell the truth?
I do.
Thank you very much. We have the approval of our minutes of December the seventeenth. This is again, a special call zoom meeting. Any uh comments or corrections? But ask for a motion, a motion for approval, please.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Richie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Stand.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. We have the uh subdivision approvals for your uh information does not require a uh an approval. Are there any corrections or deletions? Hearing none. We will uh any uh and and also our letters of credit approved. So we are, is that, am I right?
There was, uh, there wasn't any to be added for this.
Okay. I, I didn't see that. So thank you, Jessica.
No problem.
Any, any old business?
No, sorry.
I don't see any. So we'll move into our new business for tonight, our public hearings. Our first item tonight is docket number twenty twenty one, first case of this year, oh, one flume. The location is Zero Nashville Road. The applicant and the property owner is, please accept my apologies if I've mispronounced your name. Roof Kio. And it was the pre-application date of September twenty eighth, twenty twenty. The applicant is proposing to amend the flume for four point two, four point two seven six acres located Zero Nashville Road from mixed-use residential to mixed-use commercial. If a flume amendment is successful, the applicant would later like to rezone the property to L one light industrial to allow for an office building for a trucking company and associated trucking parking, parking on the property. So that is our propo- first proposal for tonight, and who will be presenting that?
That'll be me, Chair Warren.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, we had a pre-application conference on September twenty eighth uh for the property you see outlined uh here in green. Um, as Chair Warren has already stated, um, uh, the, the property is owned RE currently, or residential estate. And um it's currently vacant. As you can see in the area, there's a lot of agriculture, uh, some single family. Uh, then you got a smattering of commercial, a couple multifamily, public uh, public institutional. Of course, South Warren is uh, is just down the way there. And the future land use map, which is uh what we are considering tonight, um, is currently a mixed-use residential. And the applicants would like to change that to mixed-use commercial. Um, we don't often get uh applications that are only future land use map amendments without a zone change. But as Chair Warren has already said, um, if this uh future land use map amendment is successful, the applicant's intent is to come back later uh with a request to rezone the property to light industrial uh to allow an office building for a trucking company and associated truck parking on the property. This uh now, if you received your packets, uh, you should have uh received via email probably a uh, uh, this updated concept. Um, that uh we'll kind of touch on more in just a second. The previous one showed a connection to Morehead Road. This one does not have one. Um, but uh we'll kind of go through the, the information here in the staff report. Um, agriculture is the original zoning of the property. The property was rezoned from Ag to R one, which at the time, that was single-family residential in nineteen eighty-five. And then converted from R one to RE uh residential estate through an amendment to the zoning ordinance in two thousand and one. Compatibility with comprehensive plan. Um, again, this is currently mixed-use residential. The applicants would like to change that to mixed-use commercial. This body should determine if the proposed amendment is compatible with the surrounding area, including the existing single-family residential uses that are adjacent to the property. Uh compatibility with the surrounding development. Uh, just noting that there are adequate facilities and infrastructure available to support the proposed development, with exceptions noting noted regarding uh roads and stormwater. Going on to page two, uh, we have there the information from about our future land use map. I'm gonna go ahead and uh and read what we have there. Um, uh, with that information, currently category is mixed-use residential, uh, which applies to mixed-use areas where taken as a whole, the primary land use is residential and a variety of housing types and densities balanced by complementary retail, office, institutional, and civic uses. Distribution of land among these various activities shall be implemented through specific zoning with standards addressing the form and character of development to ensure compatibility. This designation applies to the historic core of downtown Bowling Green or urbanized areas being redeveloped where the primary use as residential, uh, with the primary use uh as residential where complementary, commercial, and services are provided in the contiguous area. Here, development standards should be tailored to emphasize an urban character and a mix and intensity of development appropriate to this unique center of activity. When proposed as part of a mixed-use development, commercial usage should compromise, should comprise of only twenty-five percent of such development. Standalone commercial developments should not exceed ten percent of any contiguous areas designated mixed-use residential. No commercial footprint should exceed ten thousand square feet. And compatibility will be assessed by applying policies in LU one one three in conjunction with the general development plan. So that's what the current future land use map uh is designated. The mixed-use commercial category, which is being requested tonight, applies to tr- strategic areas mostly undeveloped today that are located near designated industrial parks and accessible from major transportation corridors. These areas are envisioned as predominantly large-scale employment and business centers, albeit supplemented by compatible light industrial, retail, services, hotels, and where appropriate, higher-density residential development. The distribution of land among these various activities shall be addressed through specific zoning. However, primary activities in these areas may include low and medium-rise office complexes as well as environmentally friendly manufacturing and business centers. On large tracks, these users should be encouraged to develop in a campus-like setting with quality architecture and generous, connected, open space to maximize value, promote visual quality, and encourage pedestrian activity between employment areas and areas of supporting uses such as retail, restaurants, and residential. The primary focus of this category is commercial mixed uses with complementary residential comprised of up to fifty percent of the contiguous area. And so below that in your staff report, we have the procedures for uh amending the flume. And so I'm gonna go through those points uh right now. First point there, um, that uh demonstrated overriding public benefit of the proposed development. This may include the provision of a majorly public facility or amenity, the provision of a major source of employment or an economic development asset that cannot be accommodated in a location consistent with the current flume. The planning commission should consider if the proposed development will provide a significant public benefit and whether or not the proposed use could be located in an alternative location of Warren County consistent with an area of the current flume already designated industrial or adjacent to an area designated industrial. The second item, the request is a correction of inconsistencies of or mapping errors contained within the flume. The request is not a correction of inconsistencies or mapping areas contained within the flume, errors contained within the flume as no industrial uses currently exist in the area, nor have any been proposed since the adoption of the Focus twenty thirty Convergent Plan. And the third point, the proposed use is clearly compatible with existing surrounding development as demonstrated by the applicant. This review should include a compatibility assessment of the proposed use, which includes but is not limited to location and bulk of building and other structures, building height, building materials, intensity of use, density of development, location of parking and signage within the surrounding area. In addition, the applicant must prove that the proposed amendment will not result in development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure, such as roads, water, sewer, and stormwater. This body should consider if the proposed trucking facility is a, is compatible with the single-family uses that are adjacent to the property. This body should further consider if the proposed flume amendment will result in a development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure, including considerations for roads and stormwater that are detailed in the site characteristic review section below. Uh, you should have also received a new narrative from the applicant. Uh, the applicant addressed, uh, submitted the following narrative to address the criteria we just discussed. The applicant said, please consider the following statements supporting future land use map amendment request. This proposed use is compatible with the commercial existing businesses along Highway thirty-one W or Nashville Road area. The proposed use is supported by the traffic from the Highway thirty-one W with the planned expansion of the Highway thirty-one W into four lanes, a highway in the near future. Our plan is to make only one entrance to the property from the Nashville Road. No truck traffic will access from Morehead Road. The project incorporates building design and other site elements such as landscaping, yard fence, lighting, et cetera, that is consistent with the standards and zoning regulations. The proposed development will strengthen the economic fabric of the Warren County, increase tax revenue, and provide job creation opportunities. The approval of the future land use map amendment provides the community with additional commercial properties in the Warren County with the benefits such as more taxes and jobs increase in our community. Moving on to the site characteristics review, um, you'll notice in your staff report, uh, under transportation infrastructure, um, there is some language there about Morehead Road. Um, I won't read all that now because uh there, there's a new concept that does not have a connection to Morehead Road anymore. Um, but we'll just note uh kind of at the end of that section, future site layout should also be coordinated with KYTC, planning for the widening of US thirty-one W, including covert extensions and fill slopes. KYTC has indicated that a full access on Nashville Road for the proposed truck facility will be permitted if this proposal is approved. Uh, going uh through this uh section, natural features, there are several mature trees on the northern and western property lines. Prime farmland, this property contains a soil type that is classified as prime farmland. Uh floodplains and wetlands, uh, while the property is not located in a designated floodplain, the property is prone to flooding. The observed high water elevation noted on the current plat for the property encompasses a significant portion of the property, roughly the southern half. As proposed, portions of the proposed building, travelways, and parking would be located in these floodplone, flood-prone areas. Correspondence from the applicant's engineer indicates that there are several options to investigate to mitigate the flooding issue, including maintenance on the outlet side of the pipe crossing under thirty-one W, which would allow more water to exit this side of the pipe and to build a detention basin and to raise the area where possible to be above any flooding areas. The applicant's engineer further indicated to staff that this will all be addressed in detail during the site design phase if this application and subsequent zone change application are approved. Uh, going on to the site design and compatibility review, surrounding density. Uh, properties fronting Morehead Road are a mixture of large agricultural tracks and rural density residential properties. Densities of existing subdivisions in the area range from zero point two one dwelling units per acre to five point four six dwelling units per acre. Surrounding architectural features, most of the structures in the area are one-story. Building materials review, the commercial building across Nashville Road is constructed of metal. Homes in the area are constructed of a mixture of brick and vinyl. Building orientation, any new structures constructed on the property should be oriented to face Nashville Road or Morehead Road. So I'm gonna go back to page one where we have our points to consider. Uh, number one, if the flume amendment is approved, a rezoning application to light industrial would be the next step in the approval process. Number two, this body should determine if an office building for a trucking company and associated truck parking is compatible with the single-family residential uses that are adjacent to the property. And number three, this body should further consider if the proposed flume amendment will result in development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure, including considerations for roads and stormwater that are detailed in the site characteristics review section of this report. Uh, the only other thing I will note is that I believe you all should have been forwarded uh some correspondence from um individuals who uh who had comments on this particular uh application. And I know there are some people on here tonight, uh, probably also uh want to comment. I think the applicants are, are with us. Uh, so that is all I have for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Monica. For those that are on the zoom call, our procedure is for our commissioners to talk about it first and then our, the applicant to give their uh their thoughts on this project. And then we will open it up to the people that, the, the, the folks that have questions. So we start now with our commissioners, commissioners, are there any questions?
Monica, this is Tim Graham. Um, third point to consider, uh, uh, if the proposed flume amendment will result in uh development that exceeds capacity of existing infrastructure. Um, are we to consider uh the fact that um uh, the road is going to be widened and the infrastructure is going to be improved? And that, uh, I think you said the transportation department said that they would allow this property?
The uh KYTC, um, they uh, they did have some, some input um that uh that a full access on Nashville Road uh would be permitted if the proposal was approved. Uh, the part of what I, I didn't uh necessarily touch on and uh regarding that was um, was up further. Uh, Warren County Publics, Public Works, um, they had indicated that their position was to prohibit truck access to Morehead Road. Um, that is what they had expressed. And so um, the, that's why you have this, I guess, why you have this new concept in front of you. Um, that uh does not show access to Morehead Road. Um, so Morehead Road is um, you know, eighteen feet wide. Nashville Road is uh, has twenty-four feet of pavement width. Um, so the, the infrastructure considerations, um, I guess, I, I can't necessarily tell you what to consider, but uh, but if that is uh, is something that, that you all want to take into account, then you certainly can.
So, so. So this may be another question for staff. Ben, I, I appreciate you jumping in. I, I guess what I'm trying to, trying to discern is um, um, is that road definitely going to be widened? And is that infrastructure definitely going to be improved? And can we count on that or consider that in this decision?
So I can be as clear as I can, I guess, would be the best way to lead into this. Um, so that's a portion of Nashville Road uh is in the highway plan to be widened. So it will likely be done at some point in the near future, but you have to understand near future for the transportation cabinet and the current state of the Kentucky state budget to make those improvements. That could be several years into the future. It is not funded and there is no way to know or guarantee when it will be funded. Uh, the absolute earliest that we would even know if, uh, you know, they got right away acquisition, then you got utility relocation, and then you have instructions, typically a six-year process. No portion of that has been funded for this section at this time, I do not believe. So.
Sorry, I don't wanna.
The earliest any of that would be, would be this net, this legislative session that's going on, session going on now.
Got it. Okay, thank you. And then uh, I don't wanna um, uh, make this point too difficult, but I do need to understand. So uh, so as we, a- as we find ourselves here today, we have KYTC and Public Works, both who have accepted uh connection to this property from Nashville Road. Are we to assume from that acceptance slash approval that the um infrastructure is adequate?
So um, I would say that the only thing you can infer from that is that KYTC says they would be granted a full access onto Nashville Road's location. Uh, as, as, as proposed, uh, the Public Works, Warren County Public Works has said it would not. They would not allow any connection to Morehead Road. So.
So in this proposal, though, if I understand it, there is no connection to Morehead Road. There, there's no, no longer a proposed connection to Morehead Road. It's only to Nashville Road.
That is correct, and they would be allowed a full access, uh, both, you know, left and right turn lanes in and out, uh, turning movements in and out of the, the development, yes.
And so could we infer from that, since the applicant has made this change, that uh Public Works is in agreement from here with regard to infrastructure?
I, I think that would probably be going a little beyond what I would be comfortable saying yes to. I think uh the only thing you could say is that they're not gonna prevent access to Nashville Road to this property for this development. The uh, whether or not it's adequate for, for truck traffic or not, um, I think they've, they've uh, they've stated what improvements would need to be made to, to allow that. So uh, so in a sense, yes.
So what, is there any other criteria that we should consider? Um, uh, when um, when looking at this proposal to decide whether the current infrastructure is adequate besides these two entities?
So that I believe uh, and either Rachel or Monica can, can help me out here, but it, believe that's just referring to infrastructure in the generic sense. So it's water, wastewater, electricity, tra- traffic, traffic control, transportation, circulation. And then we have obviously other goals and objectives that address those things as well.
So I see, okay.
It's really for you to consider all of those with your decision.
Okay, thanks, Ben.
Thank you, Tim. Commissioners, any other questions, comments on?
Yes, how, how far is this from? I should have measured it, but I didn't. How far is this from the industrial park out there? And how close is it to the high school approximately? How, how far would, would staff say it is from the industrial park to this place? And then how close is the school to this place?
Uh, Commissioner Clark, I'm um, I'm not sure of an exact measurement, but maybe Rachel.
I'm working on it. I'll get you an answer in just a.
All right, so Rachel's, Rachel's gonna do a rough measurement for us. I'll just go ahead and have this uh pulled up since this map will show um, South Warren down here. Um, and then Rachel will get us a, an estimate to see those distances.
Because I could see a facility like this down by the industrial park, but not near a school and not near all this residential that's in that area. That's my biggest concern is this looks more industrial down by the industrial park rather than out here in the middle of a residential area.
It's roughly one mile south of the industrial park and roughly three quarters of a mile north of the school.
Okay, thank you.
Are you Sandy?
Yes.
I said, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other uh comments from our commissioners tonight?
Yes, Dean, this is Rick Starks. I have a question for staff. Um, did the applicant indicate how many trucks uh would be going in and out of that area? Um, and also what materials would these trucks be carrying?
Uh, Commissioner Starks, I, I'm not certain of that. That might be a better question for the applicant.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Do you know if they plan overnight parking of these trucks?
Um, that I, I do not know, Commissioner Clark. Perhaps the applicant could address that as well.
Thank you, dear.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Yes, I would like to know approximately how many trucks might be on that property at any one time.
Uh, Commissioner Richie, I'm, I'm not positive of that either. Um, so I, maybe the applicant's keeping a list of things they can, they can address for you all. Um, but I think they could answer that for you perhaps.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am.
Any other comments while we hear from the applicant? Is the applicant on, online tonight? Or their representative?
They, they may be muted.
Okay, hold on. Can you hear me? I'm here.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Hello. This is Dina Hatilovak and uh.
Wait, wait, let's, let me, let's get you up here on the screen. Well, can't find it, but go ahead. Uh, your name and your address, please.
Uh, Dina Hatilovak. Five two five Summit Boulevard, Bowling Green, Kentucky, four two one oh four.
Uh, Dina, do you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for being here tonight. Uh, you've heard, if you would like to give a synopsis, or you've heard three questions regarding uh overnight parking, how many trucks will be there? And your thoughts on this project since you have, you all have submitted a, a, updated amendment plan to be on Nashville Road?
Uh, we currently run about um fifty trucks. And um, we are a smaller company. We've been in business for roughly fifteen years. And we really don't um expect to be, get any bigger. We probably will stay within a fifteen to twenty trucks. And um, we run uh dry vans, so fifty-three closed dry vans, boxes. And most of our drivers are out of the state. We have about uh, I don't know, a few drivers from Bowling Green, Nashville area, but uh, some of them basically would use our location to swap trailers or, you know, quick stop and then go. We really don't have a very many local drivers. So, and uh, like I said, uh, overnight parking, um, not very many drivers stay, would stay in our lot except quick, uh, you know, stop to drop off paperwork or swap trailers. They like to, you know, use a truck stops for access to food and, you know, bathrooms and stuff like that. So they prefer, you know, versus a truck or a parking lot where there's no food and stuff like that. So that won't be really, you know, that won't use our location that much for overnight.
Maybe would that be?
I would say roughly, if, if it stays on average, maybe five, six, less probably than five. If we would have, uh, because we currently have uh four, four trucks, uh, four drivers out of Bowling Green. We mostly run with, work with owner-operators which are out of the state, such as Northeast and Florida, you know, Georgia, Texas. So they uh, they just stop by to drop off paperwork and, you know, like I said, if they have a reason to coming through pretty much to stop by, uh, stop uh by our office or our parking, and they, they go on. So, and their home time is usually their house. We, when they have downtime, they stay home. That's how, how we plan the runs. So overnight parking would be minimal for the trucks. Mainly we are looking, you know, our plan was to build a smaller building with the office. maybe two truck base. Mainly we need an office and, you know, place to park these extra trailers if we have to store and have a location for drivers to, you know, come by. And we have an office location. So that's what we are looking forward to. So number of trucks, like I said, we want, we want, we're not looking to get any bigger than, you know, maybe twenty trucks on average, fifteen to twenty trucks to run.
This is Tim Graham. I have a question, if I may. On this site, I'm trying to understand the nature of your business. And, and on this site, it appears that you don't have a warehouse. So the, where these trailers that you speak of, if they're not loading them there at your facility, where are they coming from? And why would a driver need to come to your facility? I, I understand occasionally to pick up a trailer or to drop off some paperwork. But help us understand what the nature of the business is. If they're not loading and unloading materials here at this facility, what are they doing?
Well, we would, the drivers would come by to leave their paperwork. And, you know, the pay bills, if they're passing through, they will stop by. A lot of them won't because they would mail it. If they don't need to stop, they won't. We wouldn't have a warehouse, you're right. So the extra trailers that we, we actually have extra trail, a few extra trailers more than trucks because if you need to drop trailers for, to be preloaded, which we do that minimal, we used to do that more because we had more drivers, company drivers. Now it's more owner operator. So basically, basically we would park the extra trailers, a few trailers there, maybe, I don't know, anywhere from like around five, six, no more than ten trailers. And then, you know, extra truck, we always have as a backup. If we have a breakdown, you know, we would need to replace with, we, we, we put the breakdown trailer in the shop or truck and we would swap it and, you know, they would come and exchange. That's mainly for company drivers, but that's a minimal. Usually owner operators, they are, they don't swap their trailers. In our case, in our model of business, the way we run, they like, they own their truck. And we have twelve, twelve drivers like that now. So owner operator is more than company drivers in our case. So they own their truck, they own their trailers, most of them. So they would, if they have a truck in the shop, they would wait to get a fixed or trailer. They wouldn't swap it. So that option is, you know, what I just presented is extra trailers, it would be for mainly for company drivers.
So would you, would you characterize your operation as, clearly you're not unloading and loading?
No.
Goods because you don't have a warehouse. Are, are you more of an office type of facility with spare parking for your trailers and your spare trucks? Are you servicing those trucks and trailers at this facility?
First option is a more us. We would, we are looking basically to build an office with two truck base mainly for storage, like, you know, extra storage. Because if you're going to develop this, then it would, it's, it would be really beneficial to us that we want to have, you know, office location with the one or two, you know, base to, for the storage, you know, extra tires or parts. So we can, you know, we always have a extra to be able to fix our, as we need to use it for our trucks. We won't be repairing anything there. We are not a, we don't want to, you know, it's not going to be a repair shop. Mainly office with all extra storage. And the parking is where we really need, is the parking location where we have, you know, we want employees in the office, not at the house, if you understand what I mean. And I think it would be great, we live in South Side, in Summit location. It would be really, it's a great location for us. Our kids go to South Warren as well. So location really, it's convenient for us and it's, it would be good investment that we would like to develop for, as an office and a few parking spots. And, and if you look at the picture of the land, I guess you see in the map, the way these trucks where we plan, the way it shows, we basically would like to develop, like you show is building possibly eighty by sixty by eighty. And then in the back, parking, extra parking space for trailers.
It's Dina, is that right?
Yes, sir.
Dina, what's the name of your company?
Modern Trucking.
Modern Trucking. Okay.
And Dina, what is your relationship, just for the record, to K- Kiko?
I'm his wife.
Okay. Thank you.
I know we received a couple emails I was, you know, received by Rachel today. And I read those, I guess, regarding, you know, the neighbors that actually are close to our property lines. And a few weeks ago, I spoke with Mr. Sims. His house is right, the, where you showed the parking lines for the trucks and trailers on the, on the picture. He owns the property right behind that line, property line. And his house is in the left, on the left side of that, our property. And he didn't, he didn't really have any concerns. He was, I talked to him and he said it would be good that we developed that. And, you know, he was hoping we would get a stoplight over there on Nashville Road. But off, off of the Morehead Road. But this plan as it is, like I said, we have, we would like to get opportunity to go ahead and, you know, invest in this land and develop it to bring in, so we can hire maybe a little bit more office employees and kind of grow, but not, you know, I don't want to be like, I don't want to, I don't see us being a huge company. And I heard a few comments about traffic and safety. Of course, that's number one when it comes to these semi-trucks, of course, and, and cars on the road. But in this case, like we are, like I said, we are a smaller company. There is not going to be, we're not going to be open to public for repair trucks or trailers. We use other repair services here in Bowling Green, other shops. So this is mainly, we need a parking space and the office building where we can provide the services mainly that, you know, when it comes to logistics part.
So Dina, I'd like to, if I may, I want to summarize what I think I've heard here. And I want to, and the reason for this summary is to make sure that I understand correctly. The primary use for this business is essentially office use. You have parking there for your employees. And you have parking available for extra trailers that are not currently in use. A driver could come to this facility and pick up one of those trailers. Or if one of your existing trucks breaks down, a driver could take that extra truck and put it back in service. They don't come to the facility to load or unload cargo. And you don't repair vehicles at this site. It, it, would you say my, my summary is accurate?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
And Dean, and, and Dean, this is a, this is a flume change. They'll have to come back at some, her development plan later. With the binding elements.
That is correct.
Okay.
This, this is only the flume change for tonight. Thank you.
Okay.
Does the app, well, can't, I guess, in their design review and design thinking, are you going to fence this area away from the residential? And are you going to light this whole facility as far as, you know, back there where the trailers will be parked and everything? Are you going to light this whole area?
Our plan is yes. I would say our plan is to develop it. And as we heard that, and you can see there is, I guess, develop it, make sure that, you know, we, we, we stay with the codes of the, you know, requirements and everything. We would fence it, yes. Put the fence up and put the, you know, lightning up to.
And Sandy, for staff, Dean, you may be addressing, about to ask the same question. I'm trying to understand, are we to consider those items now? Because some of the opposition is asking for fencing, but that, that comes second. Is that right, Dean?
That is correct. Tonight, as, as Christian said, we are considering a future land use map amendment. And if this was approved, then the applicants would come back in with a design plan and the specifics that we were talking about here. Lighting, variances.
Fencing, etc.
Right. And, and the thing that I was trying to, if we're going to think about changing this to a commercial in the middle of all this residential, then we were trying to get it in our heads, what this could possibly be in the future for all the residential places around that.
It could be, it could be a virtual bunch of different things. This is just a concept plan.
Right.
This is not a detailed. Yeah, I don't think not, I, I don't think tonight's a very significant deal. I think it's when they come back with the binding elements is when it's more diving into.
All right.
So if I may just kind of add to that clarity. So this is a consideration, should you amend the future land use map and the comprehensive plan from what the, what it's currently designated as. Yeah, to, to industrial to allow any industrial use in the future as, as far out as the comprehensive plan, so twenty thirty. So this is a consideration, not only what this applicant is proposing, but is it, is this change suitable for the future as well? So this is again amending the, the comprehensive plan and the future land use map.
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions from the commissioners? Are, are all minds clear so far?
They are. Chair Warren, this is Commissioner Starks. I have a couple of questions to the applicant. Could you, Dana, could you explain a little bit about the types of materials that the, the trucks may be carrying, if that's an appropriate question? And also, would the trucks be coming in during normal hours? Or would there be trucking after hours as well?
She may be muted.
Hello? Have we lost her?
Actually. Yeah, I don't see her on the call.
Okay. She may have thought that was the end of.
Here she is. Hold on just a second. Okay, are you back with us now?
Yeah, I lost connection. Sorry about that.
It's okay.
I was in, sorry about that.
Rick, would you, Rick, would you repeat your question, please, sir?
Thank you, Chair Warren. Dana, this is Rick Starks, Commissioner Starks. I have a couple of questions for you. The first one is, what types of materials do you anticipate being trucked in and out of the, of your area? When I mean materials or contents of the trucks. The second question is, will the trucking be conducted during normal business hours? Say seven to five, or will there be after-hours activity as far as trucking also?
I, I didn't hear your first question. Can you repeat that? Sorry?
Yes, the first question is what types of materials or contents would be carried in the trucks?
Oh, okay. We, like I mentioned at the beginning, we work with fifty-three dry vans only. They're boxes, box trailers. And we work mainly general commodity. We haul paper, plastic, dry food, anything that would suit, you know, to haul in the dry trailers. We don't do reefers or flatbeds. So it's dry, dry freight, if you would call it, general freight.
Just materials of any kind.
What was that? I'm sorry?
So no hazardous materials of any kind?
No, ma'am. No, we, we don't have a license for hazardous material. And then the second question, our hours are seven to four. And we, we only do first shift. There won't be any after-hours operations.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Dana.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Rick. Any other questions from commissioners? Great. Hearing none, we have neighbors in the au- in the audience on the Zoom call that have questions. And you've, you've heard some of the responses. We've received your many comments and we appreciate that. We now understand that there will be no traffic on Morehead Road. And you have heard from the applicant of their intended use. So tonight we are talking about an amendment to the flume to consider the rezoning of this property. And then if this were denied or approved, then the applicant comes back in with a plan for the, a more detailed plan of what their uses are, the layout of the lighting, everything that we've talked about. So if anybody would like to make a comment, we would, we would, we would ask that comments be to have a specific, not repeating each other, and to make your point, please. So if anybody has a comment.
Hello, this is Dale Rector. I have some comments.
I'm sorry, Mr. Rector, your name is Dale Rector?
Yes, my name is Dale Rector. I live 422 Cleveland Drive, which is a dead-end road right off of Morehead.
Okay. Miss, miss, Mr. Rector, do you swear to tell the truth before this commission, please, sir?
I do. And my comments here is follows. I'm, I'm opposed to this on several bases. Specifically, the planning and zoning suggests that this has to be in a mostly undeveloped area to go from residential to commercial. It is not. It suggests that, that there should be substantial public benefit associated with the project for the residential users. There is no direct public benefit here. As the applicant has stated, most of their employees even are out of state. And as a result of that, there would be no substantial employment for this. I believe that there would be substantial concerns. Having lived there and coming out Morehead Road every day, it's already extremely difficult to make that turn and get in and out, particularly during the business hours that they will be continuing in, seven to four. That's right at the beginning of school and it's right at the end of school. So you're going to have buses that will potentially come to a stop as tractor-trailers are entering and exiting. And putting those buses at a stop on that road, I believe is extremely dangerous. In particular, since we have a lot of heavy traffic already from the existing twenty-five-ton rock trucks that fly up and down Nashville Road in that area. And, and basically, there's, there is access to transportation and logistics in the light industrial park that is a mile closer to the, to the interchange up there, including the gas stations and, and refueling and food that, that they would be looking for, their drivers would be looking for. I have concerns about it blocking vision as the cars are trying to get into and off of Morehead Road. As one of the other's neighbors stated, they're, they would like to have a light there. As one of the other's neighbors stated, they're, they would like to have a light there. This plan doesn't even propose that there's a turn lane for people to be able to get away from the tractor-trailers and would have to wait. And Morehead Road is one of those very unique areas, which unless you live on it every day, you don't really always realize that sitting there, the light change at the school and the light change by the expressway catch you going both directions. Where when you're sitting there, just when you think you can pull out because there's nothing coming from the right, then a string of traffic comes from the left. It's already extremely difficult to egress and egress from, from that location. So I have concerns about safety and visibility personally coming through there. I pass Morehead Road because it isn't really clearly marked and it doesn't have a good defined railing or anything to turn there. And there is no real good place to turn around. One other thing is the fact that even though there might be not tractor-trailers, the trailers themselves going down Morehead Road, it would encourage the tractor part of the vehicle to go up and down Morehead Road to connect between Nashville Road and Russellville Road and being the most convenient cut-through there. So it, it's just very dangerous on Morehead Road already with very sharp curves in that road. And to have buses and tractor-trailers trying to share even the 24-foot width along with those big rock trucks. I, I have been driving on Nashville Road and, and physically felt the, the feeling that those trucks pass you. And you think, oh, my gosh, if it was four inches closer, you know, I, I would, it, it's just untenable to think about what happens in, in an accident like that. Certainly not worth, in my opinion, the little bit of public benefit that would be garnered by, you know, the sale of that land, which would accrue to one person and not necessarily increase any revenue stream to the rest of the public in the area. I've tried to be concise and consistent here and non-timbered. And I'm trying to think if there was anything else that I missed. I guess in closing, I would say that this business would have the opportunity to continue to provide jobs and tax benefits to Warren County, even if it was already in a, in an industrial zone. And we've seen the industrial park just north of that already encroach on, encroach on the neighborhoods that, such as Green, not Green, Greystone, that come back the, the other short road there. So I would personally like to see less light industrial and industrial closer to the school. And, and that's just my personal opinion. I think, I think that concludes my, my comments on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rector. And Mr. Rector's comments were the traffic on Nashville Road, the vision of coming out of, in and out of Morehead Road and turning onto Nashville Road. And then the potential use of a, just a tractor cutting through Morehead Road. So those were his three comments. We would like for anybody else to comment, but we don't want to repeat the same comment. So would anybody else have a comment?
Mr., Mr. Warren, I believe, I, I believe the com, there were also a couple of comments about it not meeting the requirements right now, being mostly undeveloped and, and providing public benefit. It, it doesn't.
We will put that in, it's being, it's undeveloped now. And then the potential of public benefit for jobs and, is that correct, Mr. Rector?
Thank you so much.
Dean, could I interject one last question for staff here, just to make sure I understand something?
Yes, sir.
Isn't TAS trucking right here in that same general vicinity? And, and if so, how far from this location is TAS trucking?
Be less than a mile because we're only a mile from, from industrial park. And it's south of the industrial park.
It's a little over eight tenths of a mile away, Commissioner Graham.
Why, why does that not seem to show up on my map? I don't seem to see TAS trucking indicated on the aerial map that I'm looking at.
It's off the back of Old Train Road.
Aha, I do see it now. Okay. All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Tim. Any other comments other than what Mr. Rector, Mr. Rector, I hope I said everything correctly. Thank you for your comments or any other comments other than what Mr. Rector said.
I can't get to them.
Yes, sir. This is Don, Don Winkle at 2234 Morehead Road.
Mr. Winkle, do you swear to tell the truth before this commission, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
The property that they're talking about commonly floods during periods of heavy rain and spills over onto Morehead Road. There's at least a four-foot difference in elevation from Nashville Road to that property. If they filled that property into the level of Nashville Road, that pushes all of that water over onto Morehead Road. And there's a significant drop from 31 or Nashville Road onto Morehead Road, the paved portion of the road that floods every spring and every fall during heavy rain. So all of that would have to be water on the property that they're considering would have to be, that property would have to be raised, which would push all that water off on the Morehead Road. And there, there is no city sewage in this area. Everything is on septic. And I'm concerned about the effect of the groundwater being pushed, plus the problem with drainage or separation for sewage and what that would present. Like demands, neighbor said before, there's nothing to stop people from pulling out of the Nashville Road location right over onto Morehead Road and just making a continuous loop. Traffic on this road is outrageous. I've almost been around over three times just trying to get out for an evening walk. Or to go to the mailbox, I have to run both directions. There is no speed limit posted on this end of Nashville or Morehead Road. And it's like a Speedway already without trucks.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
It'd be a very inconvenient location. And like one of the commissioners brought up, or two of the commissioners brought up, there's a light industrial park a mile away that would be much better suited.
Thank you, sir. So we, I appreciate your comments. We've talked about the, the traffic on Morehead Road. And tonight, this is, this is just a flume amendment that if this were approved, the applicants have to come back in with a design plan. And in that design plan, by our regulations, they have to, they have to control any water on their property. So just for information for anybody that's listening tonight, and we have done this many times, the applicant, if it, whatever size property it is, they have to control the water. They cannot push it out on Morehead Road nor Nashville Road. They have to control the water that's on their property. So that's a point well made. And we are not dismissing that tonight. But if, if it came back and they had a design plan, then we would deal with that at that time. And we've talked about, for the next comments, we've talked about the industrial park eight tenths of a mile down the road. So everybody is, is aware of that. And we are also very aware of Morehead Road and the traffic that's on Morehead Road. So I think we've kind of, we're trying to hear everybody out. We just don't want to repeat the same comments. So is there any other comments from anybody else in the audience tonight? And we appreciate your comments.
Chair Warren, if I may, we have two hands raised. The first one, I think, is labeled mad Morehead Road people. So we'll, we'll let them swear, swear at least one of them in and let them talk.
So we have a name, please?
Yes, my name is Dan Wells. I live at 2495 Morehead Road, which is the property that is diagonal from this empty lot.
Okay, Mr. Wells, you swear to tell the truth tonight?
I do.
Thank you.
I also have Ken Sims here, the neighbor that Mrs. Dinah says she talked to. And he is not complacent about this at all. He does have major concerns about this as well, butting up against his property line. So that was a misstatement on her behalf. Maybe she misconstrued what he was saying, but he is not in favor of this development as well. I would just like to echo what the others have said. I mean, I know we have significant traffic issues here on Morehead Road. But just a simple Google search will tell you that the minimum safe road width that you need to make a 90-degree turn with a full-size trailer is 27 feet. 30 feet is recommended to make a 90-degree turn with a semi-trailer. Like you said, Nashville Road is 24 feet. Now, I wanted some clarification. I was thinking that this width project that's going on on Nashville Road right now, it was just to add a alternating turning lane. It is not making it four lanes. Is that correct? Or is it actually going to be a four-lane widening project? Does anyone know?
Not off the top of my head, but design of that is being, will be done by the KYTC District 3 office. There is a design, but I'm not familiar enough with it off the top of my head to tell you. It's, it's either a two-plus ones or a three-lane or a four-lane with a, with a green light. So I'm not sure which, which one it is.
Well, the last I heard was that it was going to be just a, still a two-lane, but with just a middle alternating turning lane that will still not add a whole lot to our road width there. So it is not going to be a whole lot safer with trailers turning in and out. They need a lot more road. I work in warehousing. I have for the last seven years, I worked directly next to a trucking company. One thing that we have a concern about is the, the noise pollution from them. Tractor-trailers are noisy beasts. They, the, the brake squealing, the hydraulics hissing. And if, like she said, they're just going to be swapping out trailers, those aren't guaranteed to be during normal business hours of seven to four, seven to five. That can occur at any time. The truck, the trucking company that I work next to, they have trailers coming in and out 24 hours a day, seven days a week. So that is a concern that we have, especially being in such close proximity to that. We're right there on the end of the roads. We see all this traffic that, that has been mentioned. There was actually an accident at the end of the road just now at 4:30 this evening. If that gives you any indication of the traffic problems that we already have in this area. And then with the, the approval of the new subdivision going into the field just down the road, that's going to add to the traffic, traffic situation even more. The water drainage issue, we have a sinkhole on our property that drains underneath the road and goes toward this empty lot. My neighbor across the street, Mr. Sims, he has three sinkholes that drain underneath the ground and into that lot, contributing to that flooding factor. If they build up that area and try to make it even with Nashville Road, will that back up our sinkholes? And since my sinkhole drains underneath the ground, underneath the road, will that cause a damage to the natural drainage system and cause the road to collapse?
Sir, I think, I think, I think Chairman Warren addressed that already. That will be addressed in the next, in the, in the zone change. That's nothing for us to discuss tonight.
Okay. All right, let's see. I've got a, I've got a couple other problems here. Also, with a trucking company coming in right next to, with all the noise and all this, it will drive our property values down. We have spent a significant amount of time.
And sir, sir, and I don't, I don't mean to cut you off again, I apologize, but this commission does not get involved and talk about values of property up or down when we go to make decisions on flume changes or zone changes.
Okay.
And it's not just, it's not just this case, it's all cases. I mean, so it's not, I'm not trying, I'm not trying to cut you off. I'm just telling you the, the stance on this board.
Okay. Another concern that we have, and I just bring this up because I have a colleague who owns a field next to a trucking company south of us. Truckers, as much as we don't, we don't like to think about it, they do have to go to the bathroom. A lot of them go to the bathroom in their truck and then they find a way to dispose of that. He owns a field next to a trucking company and he finds bottles and buckets of urine and feces all the time on his property.
And another, another thing that we will not get involved, this commission talking about.
All right. Well, other than.
And, 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 and I want you to know, and like it was talked, talked about earlier, tonight is just a flume change, is all they're asking for a flume change. When they come back for a zoning, if it passes tonight, they'll come back for a zoning change. That is when all the binding elements would be put in. And that's when a lot of these things would be addressed as the lighting, the drainage, the traffic. A lot of that is where, would come with the binding elements. And Mr. Wells, also what Mr. Volker said, that is, that is an up or down vote by this commission to hear again a potential plan that this board, who is a citizen board, hears, hears the citizens of the community. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes.
That's, that's exactly right. Mr. Wells, my name's Hampton Moore. I'm the attorney for the Planning Commission. And I apologize that there's been, we've, we've spent a lot of time telling you what tonight is not about. And, and if I can, maybe help you a little bit with what tonight is about. If you remember back to the staff report that started tonight's hearing, Monica told you what the possible grounds may be for amending this future land use map. And there are three. But the, the one that is really important tonight's vote is whether or not this proposed use is compatible with the surrounding area. And so what the commission would like to hear in the way of proof is whether or not having this future land use map amended to be mixed-use commercial as opposed to its present flume designation of residential is compatible with the surrounding area. So if you can help them with that compatibility issue, I think you'll help them with their, their consideration.
Okay, Will. So how long does this zoning change? How, does it have an expiration date? Does it revert back to residential if maybe Dinah, if their business goes out of business, if their company goes out of business? What's to stop anything else from going into there?
Well, once, once the property is zoned, that zoning designation runs with the land. And it doesn't make any difference who owns the property. They, the, the owner of this property would be able to use it in the manner permitted by the zone. Now, again.
But that's also, that's also why the binding elements are so important, is the binding elements will dictate what can be done on the property.
So- And, and Mr. Wells, what, what Mr. Volker just said, that if, if it went to that next stage, that binding elements would be part of our next hearing, not today, if, if that makes sense.
If I may, Commissioners, I might jump in here just a second, because I want to make sure that everybody understands this is amending, again, the future land use map. So you all, that's, that's, it's almost separate from what the zone change, that may or may not come later. This question is, should this land be rezoned to mixed-use commercial uh, category, which allows a whole number of uses? Could be, in this case, the, the, uh, intent is industrial. That it could be anything allowed in that can, can mixed-use commercial category, and it would be, once it's changed, then we are saying any use may be appropriate for that mixed-use commercial category. It just so happens to also clear the way for, uh, this applicant to come back and, and maybe ask for the industrial and include the binding elements. So there's, there's a, a big distinction there.
Thank you.
So we're changing the plan.
And one more thing I may add in addition to what Ben just said is I, I know there, that there have been some statements that we don't have any binding elements or development plan conditions before us this evening, but in the criteria that Hamp had referenced earlier in LU one point, one point four, under the compatibility assessment, tho- those are still things while not presented in the form of a development plan condition that the planning commissioners can consider, and those are those things that deal with items that you might commonly see in a development plan condition, like intensity of use, dense, uh, location of parking, um, and, and things of that nature. So al- although there's no development plan conditions that speak to that, that are presented this evening, you can still consider those things as far as evaluating the proposal this evening.
So even if this particular lot of land is surrounded completely by residential, ki- it can still, would that not be a detriment to changing it to commercial and then to industrial? Why should we have to change this to industrial when there's an entire industrial park one mile up the road that has wide enough roads and good enough, uh, infrastructure to support the semis? That's, it's-
Change.
I just don't, I don't, I just have a hard time understanding why it would be. Okay.
So I think we've understood what the neighbors are saying. The neighbors want to know if the planning commission, what we're here to term tonight is right now it's residential. Do we want to change it, the flume, the future land use to commercial, which would allow many things, when currently it's residential? And that's what we're here to decide tonight, and that's why the neighbors are concerned, because they're residential, and if they think that it should be changed to commercial.
Thank you, Sandy. Mr. Wells, thank you for your co- your very good comments, sir. Is there anybody else that, that has a comment? Uh, Mr. Wells added, uh, an additional comment about noise pollution, if this potentially was a, a trucking, um, facility. Well, I think we've talked about traffic, we've talked about Moorhead Road, we've talked about potentially flooding, if it goes to the next level. Is there anybody else that has a comment?
Yes, I have a comment.
And your name, sir?
Donald Piper, two, three, four, three, two, three, four, three, Moorhead Road.
Mr. Piper, do you tell, swear or tell the truth for us, Commissioner?
Yes, sir, I do.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any additional comments to what's been mentioned?
Yes, sir. Uh, I do have additional comments. So I understand, and I'm learning about this whole process. I understand we're in the phase one right now, and there are additional phases to follow. I don't want to be repetitious. I don't want to go back over and rehash what's already been, been said. So here's the deal. I've, I built a new home here about a year ago, and as far as I know, to my knowledge, there is no light industrial, commercial, there's nothing other than residential property up and down this roadway. And I, I may, I may stand to be corrected, but as far as I know, from all of Moorhead Road, the balance of the road, there is currently none. So I do some sub-teaching in the Warren County School System. So I pull out here at the end of Moorhead Road, and I know it's traffic, but I'm just saying, it takes me thirty minutes to turn left, and, and, and it takes me ten minutes to turn right during peak travel time. So with that being said, uh, what I would like this commission to consider before we even approve Phase One, and Phase Two would be lighting, drainage, all that kind of stuff. I think that's way, that's presumptuous. Very much ahead of what we even need to be talking about right now. So I, I don't live within eye shot of this, uh, entrance into thirty-one W, but I live within earshot of it. And so my question to this commission is, why would we take the backyard of two people that live north of the entry of Moorhead Road on thirty-one W for Bowling Green? Why would we take their backyard and the adjacent property to Mr. Sims? Why would we take that and go through all kinds of convolutions and, and, and contortions to somehow come up with the idea that it's a good idea to make this commercial or light industrial property? For the life of me, I'm a retired engineer, and I cannot see what benefit people driving trucks from other states and coming in here and dropping them off and picking them up and keeping our neighbors awake, and I know they said from seven to four, but yeah, that's, that's a pipe dream, that ain't gonna happen. Yeah, we're just all country folks out here. Uh, I mean, I'm a country boy. And I think that I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna speak on behalf of my fellow constituents here on Moorhead Road. I'm speaking for me. I, I think if you take an, uh, an old lady's backyard and a rental property, a rental house backyard, which it's a, it's a privately owned, uh, house, but there are people renting it right now, and if you take Mr. Sims' adjacent property and you zone that as light industrial, and if this is step one, and then we gotta decide about lighting and drainage and sewage and, and all that later, here's what I think. Okay, this is my two cents one. I think we do that, and, and through all kinds of convoluted rhetoric, we come up with some kind of an idea that that's a, that's a good thing. It's not. And, and what's gonna happen is, and I know what the end game is, I really do. I know the end game is to, this trucking company is not gonna fly, first of all. That, it's gonna fall in the cracks, and they're gonna come back, and they're gonna propose building apartments on that area. And then we're gonna go through this whole thing again. And we're gonna talk about, you know, building apartments there and people coming in and out of Nashville Road. We had a guy this summer almost killed on a scooter. Go back and look at your, uh, Bowling Green Police Department reports, and you'll see there was a guy that was hit with no additional traffic and almost killed the way it is now. Okay, so what's gonna happen is, we're gonna do this, we're gonna approve Phase One, if, if you commissioners allow that, and then we're gonna come back and talk about lighting and sewage and all that kind of junk, and then later on, it's gonna go, you know, we'll go through all that, those convolutions. Then what's gonna happen is, we're gonna, the end game is to get some kind of a zoning change on this plot of land. And then when we get that zoning change, then we're gonna go to Rich Pond Red Light, and we're gonna, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna bring that into the bowling, we're, we're gonna annex it, and then we'll be, I know the end game is to get your taxes on these half-million dollars home across here from the Rich Pond Red Light. Bowling Green wants those tax revenues. They do. Don't tell me they don't, because I know, I know that money is where it all goes to.
Mr. Piper, let's, let's, let's bring this back in. We, we appreciate your comments. Uh, and I'll just be honest with you, some subjections, but you have a right to express your opinion, and that's not what we're about. We are not about raising taxes. We are a citizen board to help do what's best for the community. So I'm not trying to cut you off, but you've expressed the points about traffic and, and the, and the value of your home, and i- it is an issue, traffic on Nashville Road. We understand that. Is there any other comments that are, and I'm not trying to cut you off, but any other comments that have not been expressed?
Yes, well, you are trying to cut me off, and my, and the comment that I would leave you with is that you want to hear from the citizens, you're hearing from them. And I think the commission needs to take that in due process and consider what you're doing to a residential road that is already overloaded, and I think you're, you're doing a wrong thing. You're doing the wrong thing, and I, I'm totally against Phase One, and I'm pretty sure I can come up with about a hundred other folks that would say the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Are there any other comments from anybody in the audience? I think we've heard, we're, we're not trying to cut anybody off, but is there anything different we haven't heard?
Dean, could I, could I add one thing to our list here that, uh, seems to be indirectly said, but I'm not sure anyone really says it, uh, directly? Uh, and that is, um, Mr. Piper's, one of Mr. Piper's concerns seems to be that we have three residences here, and we're, uh, considering putting an industrial, uh, development between those three residences. And, and, and in our consideration, that is a legitimate concern.
Yes.
Uh, so could we list that so that everyone understands that as well?
Sure. And I think that's a great point, Tim, and everybody, we'll, we'll put that on the comment. Uh, potential industrial, light industrial next to residential.
Thank you. Because that goes to our compatibility issue.
Yes, correct. That's what we're here to decide tonight. Thank you, Tim. Any other comments?
Fair warning, we have two others with their hands raised that wishes to speak. The first I have is, uh, Mr. Jerry Cash.
Yes.
Uh, Jerry is, in, uh, your name, please?
Uh, Jerry Cash. I live at seventy-four, twen- seventy-four, twenty-two Nashville Road.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cash. You swear to tell the truth for us, Commissioner?
I do.
Any other additional comments that's not been mentioned tonight?
I, I just want to be brief. Uh, my family has lived here for seventy years, and we're about five hundred feet, uh, south of the, uh, pro- proposed zone area. And this entire area has always been residential and agricultural, and there's been significant changes in the past four to five years. But there is, uh, no outstanding reason why there should be a zone change at this location changing the character of our neighborhood. So that is our objection.
Okay, and it's compatibility. Is that right, Mr. Cash?
That's correct. The present, uh, highway businesses, uh, nearby were always grandfathered in. There, there was a zone change, uh, other than that.
Correct. That's just-
So this would be a unique situation in the, uh, in this area, that a business, uh, are the commercial use, you're addressing the commercial use change from a residential use. This would be the, the first example of that.
Yes. Thank you for your comments.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
There was another hand up. Did you say, Ben?
Yes, sir, Stacy Carter.
All right, Ms. Carter, your address, please?
Uh, this is Jonathan Carter, two oh four-
Carter.
Two oh four, six Moorhead Road. I also own twenty-five, thirty-six Moorhead Road, which is the upper left corner of this property, next to it.
Okay.
Uh, Dean, I, I, or Commissioner Warren, I won't, uh, belabor this. I just want to say that this would put, there's a house that sits right there. I own that. This would put trucks and this whole, whole development, uh, less than a hundred feet from an existing house residence that is there.
Yes.
I guess all I would say to the citizens, um, that are here and the citizens on the commission, um, I own that house, and I would wish you would consider if this were being put next to your house and your residence, um, what would you think if it was in your neighborhood?
Yes. Thank you. Thank you for your comment. Are, are there any other comments? Uh, I appreciate, we appreciate everybody taking time tonight, and your comments are, are well-heard, and your, your thoughts are well-presented, and we appreciate that. Are there any other comments?
Jerry, we have one, or Jerry Finch with his hand up.
All right, Mr. Finch, anything different? Uh, Mr. Finch, excuse me, your address?
He's muted.
Mr. Finch? Hello?
Yes, sir.
Uh, your name?
My name is Jerry Finch.
And your address?
Three, five, four, Sylvan Circle.
All right, and you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
And your comment, please, sir?
Yes, sir. My comment was, I didn't talk to different people about it, but, uh, lots of these questions I had, they've been answered, but my question is right now, state says they gonna give access from Nashville Road into this property, but it, in the past years, past, I've had experience, you had to be five hundred feet from one road to another, and they ain't gonna be five hundred feet to have no truck entrance in there. And my other comment, if you drive up and down Dishman Lane, or if you drive anywhere where there's trucks and trailers involved, now this lady swears they ain't gonna have no trucks sitting around other than a couple spares and put spare tires in the building. But it looks like a salvage yard, never truck term, well, we got it around here. And it's gonna be an eyesore to all these families that live there. And I'm trucking for thirty years, and I know it by past experience, what takes place? And if you take a tractor, driver trying to come out of that property on the Nashville Road during schools, you're asking for a deadly cause to take place, because the trucks are gonna pull up and gonna put its nose plumb out on two thirty-one or thirty-one W, excuse me, and Sylvan Circle's gonna be in a blind spot trying to pull out there.
Yes.
And the water situation that everybody been talking about, if you drain more water, it's going to cross Nashville Road because it's a drainage pipe there on that property that ties it going into the property on the other side of the road. That's what floods that man's farm over. I know it's, sir, because my wife drove a car off in it and hit it last year, and thrown our vehicle. Uh, but-
Yes, sir. Well, we, we're, I think we, you've hit every point that we've hit, and I appreciate your, we appreciate your data, but we appreciate your comments tonight.
But what is the footage from the center line of Moorhead Road up to that property? That lady's standing there, like, answering questions, planning zoning, she ought to have it.
What, what's your question, sir?
My question is, like I said on start, five hundred feet from Moorhead Road up to this property for the drive-in is going into this property. How many feet is it from the Moorhead Road up to that property? I'm asking the planning zoning lady that.
Mr. Finch, I'm, I'm trying to measure that right now. However, I will also say that part of this application process did involve the review of this proposal by the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet. So while they do have specific spacing requirements, uh, depending on speed limits, uh, whether or not a, a signal, or whether or not an intersection is signalized or not, they do have different requirements along different roadways within our community. Um, so that, while the five hundred-foot spacing may be required in some areas for this particular proposal, they reviewed the proposed access point and stated that it would be allowed in the location shown.
Well, that's same thing, they saying on the traffic light at Moorhead Road when they had the widen proposal downhill at Rich Pond and Woodburn, and they said they ain't gonna put no light, they go wait, to wait more people get killed. I already been five killed there.
Okay, well, we appreciate those comments, and I think-
I understand that's-
All right, I think staff answered your, I think staff answered your question, so we, we appreciate your comment. Are there any other comments? Are there any other comments that have not been expressed?
Yes, I got one more.
Yes, sir, this is Dale Rector.
Uh, what is your comment that's, that's, that's different than what we have, has been expressed?
Mr. Warren, are you referring to me, Dale Rector?
Uh, I thought it was the last man. I'm sorry, Mr. Rector.
I, I, Mr. Finch is still here.
Okay, Mr. Finch, what, what is a comment that's different than what has been expressed?
Okay, the lady said they'd have a couple trucks extra, and wouldn't be doing no mechanic work. Why do you need two bays to keep a couple, three tires sitting around? And the next thing you know, there'd be like a junkyard around the property.
Mr. Finch, we, we, we are, we're, we're not there tonight. We, they, we are talking about potentially changing the zoning on this. We, when they come back in, if this were to pass, they have to come back in with a detailed development that the neighbors can approve or disapprove. We're not there tonight about the number of tires and the number of service bays.
I understand it. When, when y'all get through, when y'all get through approving this, or whatever you decide on, we, that's property owners know. I'd like to know where, what's my opinion again?
Yes, sir. We, you will be allowed to. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments? It, we're not trying to cut anybody off.
Motion.
I'm sorry.
Yes, Mr. Warren, I, I do have one other comment. Um, my comment is that, this is Dale Rector, four twenty-two Cleveland Drive. Um, the, the zoning change, as we've talked about, is not compatible, but it would also not be additive. If this property were changed to a commercial property, then the type of business that it's going in would not encourage other commercial properties as well. Other commercial properties would be detracted by the tractor trailers on that road as well. So I thought that that was relevant to this discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Rector. Uh, we, we appreciate everybody's comments tonight and, uh, your patience tonight. Uh, we would ask, I would ask for a motion. Uh, the motion tonight is to approve the Future Land Use Map Amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one oh one flume, or a motion to deny the proposed Future Land Use Amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one oh one flume.
I make a motion to approve the proposed Future Land Use Map, docket number twenty twenty-one one flume, based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has met the criteria to amend the flume as outlined in LU one one four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Gray. Do we, Gay, do we have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Uh, Jessica, would you call the roll, please? We have a motion to approve this amendment.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Richie?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Stane.
Commissioner Balance?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
No, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Absolutely no.
Chair Warren?
No, ma'am.
The motion failed?
The motion failed, and we appreciate everybody's time tonight, and, uh, we will move on to our next item.
Hamp, do we need a motion?
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Commissioner, Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir. Excuse me.
Before, before you leave this hearing, um, I, uh, I'd like to suggest to you something. There has been a motion made to approve the flume amendment, and that motion failed to pass. I think it is your obligation to take action. And so I'd ask you to ask the folks that opposed this first motion to make a motion to deny so that the planning commission can take action, um, on this application for flume amendment. Did I make myself clear?
Yes, sir. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Hamp, I forgot that. We don't have that very often.
You're right.
So you need a motion now, Hamp, is that correct?
We, we, we would, we would.
I make a motion to deny the proposed Future Land Use Amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one zero one flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed flume amendment has not met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of the evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thank you, Sandy. We have a second?
Second.
Have a second? Jessica?
So, let me, but let me remind you that
Thank you, Hamp.
That a yes vote will be against the amendment. Let's say it again. A yes vote will be against the flume amendment. A no vote will be in favor of the flume amendment. Okay?
So a yes, a yes motion is to deny the flume amendment, correct, Hamp?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Say that again, please, Hamp.
A yes vote means deny the flume amendment.
Okay.
A no vote means make the flume amendment.
Okay. Would it be appropriate, Hamp, to say that if you voted no last time, and you want to keep your vote the same, you'll vote yes this time?
Yes, correct.
Unless you've changed. Yes.
Jessica?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Gay?
Oh.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Richie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Stane.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Motion packed.
Thank you, Hamp, for that clarification.
Thank you.
Our next item is docket number twenty twenty-one oh one ZBG. Development address is Zero Morgantown Road. The applicants are Lost River Holdings LLC. And, again, I hope I pronounce this right, and mean this very respectful, not Canaruma Patel. The applicants are proposing to rezone two point eight, eight acres located Zero Morgantown Road from RS one A, single-family residential, and F floodplain to GB, general business, and F in order to develop the property with the multiple commercial uses, including a convenience store and fuel sales. The applicants are also proposing to rezone three point seven two four acres located Zero Morgantown Road from RS one A and F to PUD, planned unit development, and F in order to develop the property with a maximum of fifteen single-family residential detached homes on the same lot. We will hear a report from our staff.
Thank you, Chair Warren. I think you did a great job summarizing the request. That's before you this evening. Again, the property is located on Morgantown Road. Uh, you'll note that just to the right-hand side of your screen there on the aerial, you will see the edge of Lampkin Park, so that is also located nearby. The current zoning, again, is RS one A, single-family. A portion of the property is located in the floodplain. The current use of the property is agriculture, and there are actually three future land use categories applicable to this property, including commercial, mixed-use commercial, and the open space parks and recreation category. I'm not going to read through each of the future land use categories, but they are on page two for your reference. If you have any specific questions about any of those, I'll be happy to, to go over that in greater detail after the staff report. So if you'll note here on this page that we have pulled up, you can see that there are two zones proposed. The zoning line runs roughly here in this portion of the property. Everything to the bottom of that closest to Morgantown Road is proposed to be rezoned to general business, with the remaining portion of the property proposed to be rezoned to PUD. This is the proposed layout showing the location of the proposed commercial structure, fuel canopy, with the residential homes to be located to the rear and the portion of the property to be rezoned to PUD. Under natural features, staff has noted that sinkholes are known to exist in the vicinity, and while there are several trees shown on the nine, twenty nineteen aerial in your packet, uh, staff has noted that that has since been removed since the time that aerial was produced. So if you drove out to the site and there were no trees there, that could have been confusing because the aerial shows that it's heavily wooded, but just wanted to note that. Next, under our Site Design and Compatibility section, under density, uh, the surrounding residential uses in the area are mainly moderate density in nature. The proposed density for the PUD portion of the development is four point zero three dwelling, dwelling units per acre. Under Building Materials Review, staff has noted that buildings in the area are in mixture of brick, cement, board siding, split-faced block, metal, architectural panel, or architectural metal panels and vinyl. Building orientation, the majority of structures along Morgantown Road are oriented to face Morgantown Road. The proposed commercial structure shown on the site plan has a front facade oriented toward Morgantown Road. However, there is no requirement in the development plan conditions requiring that the building be constructed as shown on the site plan. Considerations for signage, staff has noted that the majority of freestanding signs for the existing uses fronting Morgantown Road in the vicinity are mostly monument style and are not eliminated or externally eliminated only. Additionally, existing freestanding signs in the vicinity are much shorter in height and contain a smaller sign face area than what is permitted by the zoning ordinance for the proposed general business zone, which would include a maximum height of thirty feet and a sign face area of one hundred and fifty square feet. The applicants are not proposing any restrictions related to signage for the proposed development. Under pedestrian, bicycle, and transit facilities, the nearest GOBG transit stop is located at the intersection of Morgantown Road and Old Morgantown Road. There are sidewalks on Morgantown Road east of the development that terminate at the entrance to Lampkin Park, and the applicants have agreed to provide a pedestrian connection from the proposed development to Lampkin Park, consisting of a five-foot wide sidewalk pending approval from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, uh, to be located in there right of way. Moving on to the development plan conditions, I'm going to summarize these as best as I can. I know it's been a long evening already, and we're only on the second application. Um, so, the, the development plan conditions for both the PUD and GB portions of the development, several of these are identical. Those relate to utility placement, access to Morgantown Road, building materials, lighting, prohibited uses, screening of roof level equipment, sinkholes, and a pedestrian connection to Lampkin Park. One of the main differences between the two sets of the proposed development plan conditions are the building materials. So you will want to note the differences between those in the staff report. Um, for the general business portion, that would be number three, and for the PUD portion, that would be number two. Moving to the Focus Twenty Thirty category review, staff evaluated fifteen items from the Focus Twenty Thirty Comprehensive Plan. We found six of those items to be in compliance, and there are nine items that the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, the first being LU one point one point three, which looks at compatibility of the proposed development with the surrounding area. Next, LU two, which looks at quality of development and character of the area. Next, LU two point one point one, and LU two point one point three, which include considerations for open space and connections to the greenway system. Moving down about midway, HN one and HN one point three, which look at character and pattern of development and the impact on nearby neighborhoods. Next, suitability of the proposed housing type and variety of housing options, that would be the reference to HN two point one and HN four. And last, ED dash one, which looks at diversification of the local economy. Jumping back to page one, I'm going to end with our points to consider. First, the proposal is consistent with the Future Land Use Map. Second, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. The proposal does comply with the majority of the review criteria for site design with a couple of considerations noted regarding building orientation and signage. And last, compatibility of the proposed development should be determined by the planning commission. That is all for the staff report. I know I summarized, uh, quite a bit. I'll have, I'll be happy to go through anything in greater detail, including the development plan conditions if needed.
Rachel, Tim Graham here. Um, could you, on the aerial map, it indicates, uh, the, let's call it the road or the entrance beside this piece of property, uh, it has it included. Help me understand how that's going to be used and, and why it's included in the, in the zone change.
So that entrance is actually part of this property. If you look to the rear, uh, up here, that parcel is actually landlocked. It's my understanding that there is a prescribed easement. Can't remember if it's by deed or plat, uh, where this access is to be used for the benefit of this property as well.
I see. So, so just to be clear, uh, this, that road or that entrance is owned by this property owner, is that correct?
Correct. And the, the easement is shown on, uh, the site plan and on the zone change exhibit. That hashed area, um, would indicate that ingress egress easement.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, commissioners, any other comments for Rachel?
Rachel, uh, uh, Mr. Warren, this Hamp, I had a question if I might. Rachel, what, what's the need for the PUD?
So, the proposal involves multiple single-unit structures on the same piece of property. So these are all standalone units, and we do not have a zoning category that would allow that. So that is the purpose of the PUD request.
So all of these fifteen residences will be owned by a single, will be owned by a single owner and then rented to the occupants?
Correct. That is my understanding. I, I don't know that there are plans to condo those units for any reason. The applicant may want to address that.
Thank you.
Okay, so now you've opened another question for me, Rachel. Can they condo those units, given, uh, this, uh, this proposal, if it's all on the same deed currently?
So, I guess that's, here lately, we've had some creative proposals, um, where you could essentially come in and condo the building footprints. Uh, you would have to establish a condominium plat, um, with a master deed.
So that's something we would not have to consider here tonight.
Correct.
Whether, whether it could or could not in the future.
Right. I, your, your consideration is whether or not this number of units at this location and this style and pattern of development, if that is compatible with the area.
Got it. All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Graham. Any other questions from commissioners? Is the applicant here, or are they represented by counsel? Uh, we have Nick Patel, or John Sewell, or Larry Hinden?
Uh, Commissioner Warren, this is John Sewell. Can you hear me?
Okay. Yes, sir. John, would you, uh, state your address, please, sir?
Uh, John Sewell, fourteen nineteen Bays Fork Road, Bowling Green, Kentucky, four two one oh three.
John, do you swear to tell the truth for his commission?
Yes, sir.
Thank you for being here tonight. Any comments, questions, comments to the questions that were asked, excuse me?
Uh, yes, to the, uh, I guess the question about, uh, the houses being rented or condo, the, the plan now is for Mr. Patel to own these houses and, and rent them. Um, there's no plans at this time to, to condo the property um, as, as questioned. And then the question from, from, the other question from Commissioner Graham, there, you are correct, there's an existing access point that the Rest Care property u- utilizes now. There's a, a deed at fifty-foot ingress egress easement. Uh, apparently that, that Apparently, that road's only about 20-foot wide. We would be widening that road, the portion that's on our property, to 24 feet to make it accessible for two-way traffic for the residential property at the back.
Great. And so if I may follow up on that just a bit, I noticed that you have ingress and egress for the commercial portion. That ingress and egress is on Morgantown Road, it appears. Would you also have ingress and egress to this adjoining drive that you just spoke of?
Yes, we would. So we're showing access over, from the commercial property over to that access point too, just to provide two access points for the commercial property. Also, the other access point that we're showing would line up with Potter Avenue that's across Morgantown Road.
God, okay, great.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, John. Any other questions from the commissioners for Mr. Sewell? Our hearing none. Is there anyone in the audience that has a question tonight? Ben, do we have anybody? Any hands up?
Nothing. I see, just a second. I don't believe so. I don't see anybody with their hand up for trying to.
All right. Thank you, Ben.
Chair, Chair Warren, this is John. One last comment I will make, I think Rachel made a comment about the orientation of the commercial building relative to Morgantown Road. It is our intent for that commercial building, obviously for visibility reasons. And function-wise, that commercial building would face Morgantown Road as shown on the development plan.
Okay. Thank you, John. Any other comments or questions? I would call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan and docket number 202101CBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Jessica, would you call roll, please? Jessica?
Sorry, for some reason, I'm muted. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Did you say Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
I have to abstain because I've missed most of this particular staff report.
Okay. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. The motion is, has been approved, is applied for. Christian, do we count your coughing as a yes vote?
It should. Y'all getting ready to lose me to a nap?
Hang with us, man, hang with us. All right, here we go. The next item is docket number 202102ZBG. The development address is 1300 Campbell Lane, MPT of Bowling Green Vibra LLC, care of Stewart Lock. The applicants are proposing to rezonate 15.36 acres located 1300 Campbell Lane from general business and RM4 multifamily residential to highway business in order to expand the existing medical rehabilitation center. So staff?
Thank you, Chair Warren. Moving right along here. As you mentioned, the property is located at 1300 Campbell Lane, which is the current location of Sky Rehab. Just a little bit of history about the property. The zoning is split and the property did receive approval for a special exception permit for rehabilitation hospital on the property in 1988. This is no longer an eligible special exception or conditional use in RM4. And the current building in the general business portion of the property does exceed the maximum square footage allowed in general business. And therefore, the property and building are non-conforming or legal non-conforming, which we would also refer to as grandfathered. Grandfathered or legal non-conforming uses can continue indefinitely. But since there's a proposed building expansion, that has triggered the need for this application that is before you this evening. The future land use map designation is commercial. And so the proposal is FLIM compliant. And I'm going to jump to the site plan that shows the proposed building expansion in this gold area, which would be the rear portion of the building. Campbell Lane would be to the left-hand side of your exhibit, just to get you oriented here. Looking at the site design and compatibility review, we have outlined that there are a mixture of uses in the area. We've stated that architectural features, there are buildings from one to two stories in height. Building materials review, the existing structure has a brick exterior. Other nearby commercial structures are constructed primarily of brick. Under the development plan conditions, the applicant supplied six development plan conditions that address permitted uses, access, tree preservation, building materials, considerations for sinkholes and maximum building height. Staff evaluated 15 items from the comprehensive plan and found 10 of those items to be in compliance. Five are up to the planning commission to evaluate, which would include LU 1.1.3 compatibility, LU 2, quality of development and character preservation, LU 252, compatibility of the proposed infill development, HN 1 and HN 1.3, character and pattern of development and the impact on existing neighboring uses. On page one, I'll wrap up with our points to consider. First, again, the proposal is consistent with the future land use map. The proposal complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the review criteria for site design. Incompatibility should be determined by the planning commission. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Commissioners, any questions regarding this proposal? Hearing none, applicants are, Sewell are on the call. Would you all have any additional comments?
Commissioner Warren, this is Brian Shirley, most on the line with Stuart Locke, who's the CEO at the facility. We're here to answer any questions if you would have any.
Brian, would you just go ahead while we got you on the record? You're Brian Shirley, your name, I mean, your address, please, sir?
1136 South Park Drive, Bowling Green, Kentucky. And I do swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, Brian. Were there any comments from Mr. Shirley or Stuart Locke?
We're just here to answer any questions if you have any.
Is there anyone in the audience that has a question regarding this proposed change? Thank you, Stuart, Brian, for being here tonight. Hearing no comments, I would call for a motion, please.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with a condition on a general development plan, docket number 20212ZBG. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted Focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Thanks, Greg. There's our second?
Second.
We have a second. Jessica, would you call roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jessica. The motion has been approved. Next item tonight is docket number 202102 Flume and 202103Z County. The location is 610 Richardsville Road, a portion of it. And it's Brian and Debbie Hendrick, the owners, and Handy Homes LLC, care of Jeff and Shelley Anderson and Matthew and Adrian Hardy. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 3.0 acres located 610 Richardsville Road from agricultural to rural density residential. If the flume amendment is successful, the applicants would like to rezonate the same portion of property from ag to RE residential state in order to create a maximum three single-family residential lot. So we'll hear a report from the staff.
Thank you, Chair Warren. As you mentioned, we're here to consider two applications this evening. The first for a future land use map amendment from agriculture to rural density residential. And if that is approved, there's then a subsequent zone change that would follow to create a maximum of three one-acre lots. You can see the portion of the property involved with the application highlighted in yellow on the aerial. The current zoning is ag. The current use is also agriculture, with again, the future land use designation currently being agriculture. This is the proposed subdivision. You can see the three lots outlined in blue. Looking at page two of your staff report, we have included a reference to LU 1.1.4, which outlines the procedures to amend the future land use map. I'm not going to go through these in detail. I think we had a good review of these in the first case tonight. So the applicants did include a brief narrative to help address the criteria to amend the future land use map. This states that this property is a perfect location for single-family homes. With all of the factories at the trans park that are creating jobs, we need more homes to accommodate the workforce. The water line is 600 gallons per minute flow, which will be more than enough to supply these homes. State Highway 263, which is 19 feet wide, has been evaluated by the state road department and has been determined to have sufficient site distance. The applicants have also included development plan conditions concurrently with their rezoning application to help address this criteria. Moving on to the site design and compatibility review on page three, surrounding density. Densities within a quarter of a mile of the property range from 0 to 5.62 dwelling units per acre with a median density of 0.39 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 0.66 dwelling units per acre. The proposed density is one dwelling unit per acre. Surrounding architectural features, the majority of homes within a quarter of a mile or one story. Home sizes range from 707 square feet to 3,077 square feet with a median home size of 1,672 square feet and an average home size of 1,770 square feet. Just under 60% of the homes have a garage. Under building materials review, homes in the area are a mix of brick and vinyl with a couple of metal homes also present nearby. About half of the homes have a brick foundation, with the rest having a mixture of plain face block, split face block, post and pier foundations and stone. Going on to the development plan conditions at the bottom of page three, there are 10 which address things including preservation of existing vegetation, building materials, foundation materials, minimum roof pitch, minimum home size, a prohibition on modular and manufactured homes, building orientation, a front yard setback of 50 feet, access to the property and considerations for onsite septic systems. Moving on to page four, Focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 15 items and found six of those to be in compliance. None of those items, the planning commission should evaluate for compliance, which include LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at the future land use map. LU 1.1.3 compatibility, LU 2, quality of development and character of the area. LU 2.9, rural character protection. NCR 2.4, considerations for the Richardsville community. NCR 241, development pressure on the countryside. And last, HN 2.1 and HN 4, which look at suitability and variety of housing options. On page one, wrapping up with the points to consider. The first is that the planning commission should consider if the proposed future land use map amendment meets the criteria outlined in LU 1.1.4 of the comprehensive plan. And if approved, the proposed zone change would be consistent with the future land use map and the rural density residential category. Next, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and a majority of the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And again, compatibility should be determined by this body. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Are there any questions from the commissioners tonight? Okay, hearing none. Jeff and Shelley Anderson or Matthew and Adrian Hardy, are there any comments you would like to make? Are the applicants online?
Chair Warren, they are. I think they're trying to figure out how to unmute.
Okay.
Okay, can you hear me?
I'm sorry, sir. Is your name close, sir? Can you all hear?
Yeah, Anderson.
No.
He's kind of choppy, his voice.
We heard the name Jeff Anderson, is that correct?
Yeah.
Asked him if his cell phone's nearby and is it on?
Mr. Anderson, is your cell phone on? Could you turn it off?
Yes.
Okay. I think we can hear you.
Can you hear Jeff Anderson? Turn it off?
You what?
Turn it off.
Okay, can you hear us, sir?
I can hear you, yes, sir. I'm sorry.
State your name and address, please, sir. Mr. Anderson? Ben?
Mr. Warren, I. Can you hear me? This is Jeff Anderson. Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, Mr. Anderson, would you state your name and address, please, sir?
Jeff Anderson, 723 North View, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
All right, thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth for this commission?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any comments that you would like to make about your application?
No, sir, other than we just would like to provide some good quality residential homes there in that area. It's lacking a little bit of building going on there and they could be an asset to the community.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Is there anyone in the audience that's objecting or has comments regarding this flume amendment and the zoning change? Soon, Ben, there's none. Do you see hands raised?
I see none.
I'm sorry?
I don't see any.
Oh, thank you, Ben. Okay. So we would call for a motion, the first, the first, the first motion is the flume amendment.
Make a motion to approve the proposed future land use map, docket number 20212Flume, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing of proposed flume amendment. As met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 and in the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion and summary of evidence, testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
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 Thank you, Jessica. Jessica, if you'll call, roll.
Yes, Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Starks.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Thank you. The motion is approved. Our second amendment to this zone change, the flume amendment is passed. The second is our zone change request.
Make the motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and conditioned upon a general development plan. Docket number 2021-3Z County. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan. Demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further requests this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
Jessica.
Commissioner Gay.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie. Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Yes ma'am. The both motions have been approved for approval. Our next item tonight is docket 2021-04 Flume and 2021-04 Z County. The address is 971 Richards Road. The applicant's names are Easley, LLC, care of Brent, Easley. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 3.39 acres located at 971 Richards Road from agriculture to rural density residential. If the flume amendment is approved, the applicants would like to rezone the property from ag to RE in order to divide the property into a maximum of two single-family residential lots. So we'll have our staff report.
Thank you Chair Runner. I'm sorry, Chair Warren. So you saying Chair Runner?
Thank you, Rachel.
I'll take that. I've been called worse. We had a pre-application conference on November 18th for the property you see outlined here in yellow. And I'll go ahead and note, you see there that there is another structure drawn in there. If you all drove out there, you probably saw there are currently two structures on the property. That is because, as I understand, there are some, I believe, some elderly parents who live on the property. And so one of those structures is considered the accessory apartment, which is okay for someone to do on property zoned agriculture for a relative to live on the property with them. It would still be single family. But what the applicants are requesting this evening is to subdivide each of those structures on their own lot, so. Currently it's zoned agriculture, it's used as a single-family, area is predominantly agriculture and single-family. And a future land use map is agriculture, which the applicants would like to change to rural density residential. And if that is successful, change the zoning from ag to RE to divide the property into two single-family residential lots. So I'll pull that up so we can see what the request is here. And you see those existing residences shown there. The applicants with 3.39 acres, their proposed density is .59 dwelling units per acre. I'll just note on the first page of the staff report that there are adequate facilities and infrastructure with the exception noted regarding road width. There are a few mature trees located in the northeast corner of the property. There's a portion of a pond in the southeast corner of the property. And one of the existing residences on the property was constructed in 1900. Moving on to the future land use map section, we've already kind of looked at the LU 114. And so we'll look at the applicant's narrative to address the findings. They said, "We are requesting a flume amendment from the agriculture to rural density residential to match the proposed RE zoning." Subject property will be subject to a new set of development plan conditions. The current use of the property is residential. The requested amendment to the future land use map would not result in any development that exceeds the capacity of existing infrastructure. I'll just note on the site characteristics review, again, there's a residence and accessory apartment or accessory dwelling on the property. In the event the existing residences are ever replaced, setbacks will adhere to the RE standards set forth in the zoning ordinance. Soil suitability, the property contains a soil type that's classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. And again, we've already mentioned the home built in 1900, however, is not a locally designated historic property nor is it listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Under site design and compatibility review, surrounding density. Densities for properties fronting Richards Road range from 0 to 0.98 dwelling units per acre with a median density of 0 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 0.13 dwelling units per acre. Proposed density is 0.59 dwelling units per acre. Surrounding architectural features, homes fronting Richards Road range from one to two stories in height. Home sizes range from 1,309 square feet to 4,158 square feet with a median home size of 2,776 square feet and average home size of 2,703 square feet. Primary residence constructed this year is 4,158 square feet and the existing accessory dwelling unit is 1,638 square feet. Building materials review, about 50% of the homes fronting Richards Road are vinyl with the other half brick. Building foundations are a mixture of plain block, split-faced block, brick and stone. The existing home has a majority brick exterior with a brick foundation and the accessory dwelling unit is vinyl with a brick foundation. Building orientation, existing homes on the property and along Richards Road are the front facade oriented toward Richards Road. Development plan conditions, the applicant submitted eight. I'll go ahead and read those. Maximum number of lots shall be two. Number two, manufactured homes shall be prohibited. Number three, the minimum home size for any new residents constructed shall be 2,500 square feet exclusive of garages and porches. Number four, any new residents constructed on the property will be constructed of a minimum of 50% brick, stone, ephes, concrete siding, or other modern masonry material. Plain or split-faced blocks shall not be allowed as a primary facade material. Building foundations for new residences shall not include exposed plain-faced block as visible finished material. Number five, any modification to existing access points or installation of new access points shall be coordinated with and approved by the Warren County Public Works Department. Number six, the existing residences will continue to utilize the existing septic systems located on the property. The Barren River District Health Department shall inspect the current systems and/or issue a permit for new septic systems prior to any new home being constructed on the property. Number seven, all mature and healthy trees not existing within building envelopes, areas for driveways or walkways shall be preserved to the greatest extent feasible. And number eight, in the event that the existing historic home is ever demolished or replaced, any salvageable materials from the existing home will be donated to the Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar organization prior to demolition. Focus 2030 category review, there are 13 items there, three of which comply and 10 of which are left up to your determination. Those are LU 111 and 112, as well as 113, which deals with the flume and compatibility of the proposal. LU 2, if it's a high-quality development, that will protect the character of the area. Proposal generally complies with LU 214, PR 17, NCR 16, dealing with tree preservation. NCR 241, you all should determine if this development will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. Proposal generally complies with NCR 25 and NCR 253, which deal with the historic home and which the applicants addressed with Habitat for Humanity Restore or similar organization. So again, just as a reminder, if approved, the property will be subdivided so that each home is on its own lot as depicted on this development plan here. We'll go back to page one for the points to consider. Number one, this body should consider if the proposed flume amendment meets the criteria outlined in LU 114 of the comprehensive plan. If approved, the proposed zone change would be consistent with the flume enrolled in the residential category. Number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with the exception noted regarding road width. The proposed general development plan complies with the majority of review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And the planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the surrounding area. So I believe that is all I have for the staff report and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you Monica for your report. Commissioners, are there any comments or questions? Mr. Easley, if you're on the call tonight, do you have any comments or questions?
Do not.
Thank you. We have two motions here, one to amend the flume and the second one is a zoning change amendment. So we call for a motion, please.
I make the motion to approve.
I'm sorry, Mr. Warren. Just for purposes of the record, if you could ask if there's any opposition on the call.
I apologize, Ham. Is there any opposition to this zone change request? Hearing none. Hearing none. Thank you, Ham. We will call for a motion for the flume amendment and then the zoning amendment. Thank you, Ham.
I make the motion to approve the proposed future land use amendment, docket number 2021-4 Flume based upon a testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. Proposed flume amendment has met the directive to amend the flume as outlined in LU 114 and the comprehensive plan. Further, I request this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Jessica, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jessica. Our second amendment is the zoning map change for this same property. Do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon a general development plan, docket number 2021-4Z County based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the focus 2030 comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance and action presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning amendment agreement is not with. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second.
We have a second? Okay. Jessica?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Gay.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance. I'm sorry. Commissioner Blackburn.
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark.
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Ma'am, thank you. Know it's been a long night and all y'all are coughing. We're going to get through here in a few minutes. Christian, say a lot.
Say I'm not the only one coughing.
Are you still with us, Christian? Dean, I think.
I'm here.
Christian has gotten well in the course of this meeting.
I think Barry Bell and Christian both.
Listen, Dean, after Ham stopped you last time, I'm pretty sure he's getting paid by the hour.
All right, here we go. Two more items. Next item is 2021-05Z County, 1145 Bronner Road. The applicant is Jason White. And the applicant is proposing to rezone 4.57 acres located at 1145 Bronner Road from agriculture to an F floodplain to RE and F in order to subdivide the property into two single-family residential lots. So we will hear from our staff.
Thank you Chair Warren.
Is this Ben or?
It's Monica. I know, it's.
This is Velma.
Yeah, this is Velma, right?
They're really picking on each other tonight.
You can't have fun life, it's not working.
Yeah, it's good to have fun. Even if we can't be together, we can still have fun over Zoom. I like it. We had a pre-application conference on November 30th for the property you see outlined here in yellow, which is zoned agriculture with a little bit of floodplain there in the back. Just can't really see it on here, but it's there. Current use is single-family residential and in the area you've got agriculture and single-family residential predominantly. And the current future land use map is low-density residential. And so here is what the applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into two single-family residential lots, which would leave that proposed density at .42 dwelling units per acre. There is an exception noted regarding road width in regard to our facilities and infrastructure. The rear portion of the property is heavily wooded. We're going to look at the site characteristics review. There is an existing house on the property that is proposed to remain. Any new residents would adhere to the RE standards set forth in the zoning ordinance and a minimum front yard setback, which we'll look at in just a second in the conditions. Mentioned road width, Bronner Road has 14 feet of pavement width. Prime farmland, the property contains a soil type that is classified as prime farmland. Soil suitability contains a soil type that's classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields. And we've already mentioned that a portion, a small portion of the property is in the floodplain. Site design and compatibility review. Surrounding density, densities for properties fronting and having access to Bronner Road range from 0 to 3.39 dwelling units per acre. Median density, .37 dwelling units per acre. Average density, .61 dwelling units per acre. Architectural features. Homes in the area, fronting and having access to Bronner Road are mainly one-story. Also a few one and one and a half and two-story homes in the area. Several have basements, majority have at least a one-car garage. Sizes range from 1,120 square feet to 2,663 square feet. Medium size, 1,706 square feet. Average size, 1,704 square feet. Existing home on the property is 1,531 square feet. Building materials review. Half the homes in the area are constructed of brick, stone, or concrete siding. Other half mainly vinyl, couple of wood homes mixed in. Little over half the homes have a brick or stone foundation. The remainder have a mix of split-faced and plain-faced block. The existing home is brick with a concrete block foundation. Existing home also faces Bronner Road. The applicant submitted four development plan conditions. I'll go ahead and read those. Number one, all new residences constructed shall have A, minimum 1,400 square feet of living space. B, front facade shall face Bronner Road. C, minimum building setback limit shall be 35 feet from Bronner Road. D, brick or stone veneer foundation. E, minimum of a one-car garage shall be provided. F, proposed driveway shall be approved by Warren County Public Works. Number two, development shall be limited to a maximum of two lots. Number three, existing healthy trees of 12-inch caliber and greater and located within 10 feet of side property lines and within 25 feet of the rear property line shall be preserved unless located in a building envelope, area of utility placement, or area used for a driveway or walkway. Removal of dead, damaged, or diseased vegetation is permitted. Number four, the existing residents will continue to utilize the existing septic system located on the property. The health department shall issue a permit for a new septic system prior to any new home being constructed on the property. Focus 2030 category review, there were 13 items, eight of which comply and five of which are left up to your determination. Those are LU 113, which deals with compatibility. LU 2, if the proposal is a high-quality development, that will protect the character of the area. NCR 241. NCR 241, we talked about the road width being, being narrower than the 18-foot minimum. So determine if the proposal will result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. HN 21, HN 4, if the proposed development is located in a suitable location and if it will enhance the array of housing options available in the area. I'll go direct to the points to consider on page one. Number one, the proposal is consistent with the flume and low-density residential category. Number two, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria with an exception noted regarding road width. And number three, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. So that is all I have for the staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Monica. Is there any questions from your commissioners? Mr. White, applicant, are you here? Do you have any comments you would like to make?
Yes, I'm here.
Any additional comments, sir?
No, sir, I don't think so. I think the young lady covered it well.
All right. Thank you very much. Can we get your address just for the record, please, sir? I'm sorry.
My address is 235 Ayers Lane, Scottsville, Kentucky.
And just for the record, you swear to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Is there any opposition to this zoning request?
Yes, sir, there is.
Okay. And your name, sir?
Douglas Bunch, 1550 Bronner Road.
All right, Mr. Bunch, you swear to tell the truth for this commission?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
I have four points. The first one is the Arnold Consulting Engineering Services. When they surveyed the property line adjacent to us, they removed the original markers that were placed by Barry Claypool. And where that becomes important is in looking at the map. The second point is that within 100 feet of that property line, there is a sinkhole that is getting larger. The third point is that in front of the proposed dwelling that would be constructed, the roadway is currently washing out. I believe that is connected to the sinkhole that is on our property. And fourth, and most importantly, the width of the road where they are proposing to put that driveway into this new dwelling, that is currently an easement used by the Warren County Public School System. The Warren County Public School System has also used our road in years past for training its new bus drivers because it is such a narrow road. And across the street from that property is a bluff that drops off, I would say, approximately 100 feet. So it causes the new bus drivers to train hard. With all these considerations, there was a reason that this was farmland, and it should remain farmland.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
What was your first name again? I'm sorry.
Douglas. Douglas Bunch.
Douglas, okay. Thank you for your comments. Mr. White, is, are you, is Arnold Consulting with you tonight?
Yes, sir, they are.
Okay. Would you ask them to comment on Mr. Bunch's questions?
Sure. My name is Aaron Arnold. My address is 230 Scottsdale Drive, Bowling Green, Kentucky.
Aaron, do you swear to tell the truth for this commission?
I do, yes, sir.
Thank you. You've heard about Mr. Bunch's questions about the sinkholes, the roadway washing out. The public schools is maybe a little bit out of our purview. Would you care to address his concerns?
So I'll go, I guess, last question first and then work my way back. So as far as the school system, if, if there is an easement that exists there, I know Mr. White will be happy to work with the school system and making sure they still have the access to train their bus drivers in that area. As far as the washout of the roadway, I'm not aware of washout, not saying that it's not there. But if that is indeed the case, we can contact the county road department and if that is associated with the sinkhole, I know the county Stormwater Management Department, we can, we can call them and, and have them assess that sinkhole and provide recommendations of if it is affecting the roadway. And if there's anything that needs to be done between the two, whether that is stabilization or remediation of that sinkhole or with the road department fixing any washout that is associated with that, that sinkhole or any runoff along the roadway.
Thank you, Aaron. Mr. Bunch, did you hear his comments?
I did. I didn't understand his answer to why his company removed the markers that Barry Claypool put out there. May, maybe I didn't understand them, or maybe I just didn't hear them.
So as, as for that one, I didn't actually, I didn't provide an answer for that one yet. I'm not aware of removing any markers. Our, our survey that was actually provided, that Exhibit B depicts that those markers are there. So I don't know if I can answer that question of they have been removed. I'm not aware that they have been removed.
Well, in Exhibit B, you show the land that was known right beside it. Okay, the sinkhole should have been shown. You came 4/10 of a mile down our property and you put markers on our farm. So I'm, I'm just trying to understand how it is that you're all over the frontage of our, our farm, but yet you're, you're leaving out one of the major indicators in why this has always been considered farmland because my wife's father sold this to the previous owners. So there, there's an understanding as to why this property needs to remain farmland.
So Dean, I don't think we're in a position to mitigate a property line dispute. I think that is part of what Mr. Bunch is, is indicating here. If there's other parts of this that we need to address, certainly we want to, we want to address that.
Is the sinkhole on the Bunch property or on the White property? It's kind of confusing on where the sinkhole was located.
It currently is on the Bunch property. I believe the way that the road frontage washes out in front of the White property, that it goes underneath the road. But I've never taken the equipment to have it surveyed to find out, so that is only an estimate. I was in touch with Storm Management in the past, and I'm trying to remember his name. He retired a few years ago. He lives out in Woodburn. But basically, at the time, there's no money in the budget for it, and they're not gonna do anything. Jack Wright. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Can I comment? Sure. I think the sinkhole he is talking about is located, like he said, on his property. I would say a good 100 feet from the property that I own. It's probably out in his field, probably 50 feet or more, something like that. I don't really know. I haven't ever measured it because I've never had this question come up, but the school bus, we've allowed them, I guess they was doing it before we bought the property, and we still allow them to turn around there and have no desire to stop them in any way. Matter of fact, out on Ayers Lane in Scottsville, Kentucky, the school buses use my driveway out here to turn around in. So we have no problem with them continuing to do that. Thank you.
So Mr. Bunch, does that answer the, your questions and comments?
It's their side, I understand.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any other comments? Anybody, excuse me, anybody in the audience besides Mr. Bunch? Commissioners, any other comments? We call for a motion, please.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2021-05Z County, based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 Comprehensive Plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted Comprehensive Plan. Further, I request that this motion include summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unsell?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Warren?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jessica.
You're welcome.
The motion has been approved. Thank you all for your time tonight. Our last item tonight is docket number 2021-03 flume and 2021-06ZBG. The development location is 1510 Highway 185. The applicants are MNMLC, Matt, Mark, and Nick Fuqua. The applicants are proposing to amend the flume for 7.276 acres located on a portion of 1510 Kentucky Highway 185, 185 from mixed-use residential to high-density residential. If the flume amendment is successful, the applicants would like to rezone that portion of the property from A to RM4 multifamily residential in order to develop that portion of the property with a maximum of 168 multifamily residential units. The applicants would also like to rezone 7.0145 acres located on the remainder of the property from PUD in order to develop a maximum 53 single-family residential lots. We'll hear from our staff, please.
Thank you, Chair Warren. Last one of the evening. Thank you for everyone's patience and for sticking around. I know it's been a long night. But as we just heard, there are two more proposals before you this evening. One, to amend the future land use map for a portion of the property located on Kentucky Highway 185. I'm gonna jump to the exhibit here so you can see a little bit better of how that, that breaks down. So the future land use map amendment request pertains to the portion in this mint-green color. That's from mixed-use residential to high-density residential. And then the blue-shaded area, there's no future land use map amendment that's needed for that portion of the request. The current zoning is agriculture, and the current land use is also agriculture. The future land use is split agriculture and mixed-use residential, again with the future land use map amendment for a portion of the request to high-density residential. We've also seen the reference to LU 1.1.4 in a couple of our other applications this evening, so I'm not gonna go into that in detail. But in order to address the criteria to amend the future land use map, the applicants have stated that the proposed use of the subject property will benefit the public by providing a much-needed mix of residential properties and by doing so in an area that has been largely unrepresented in recent residential development. Making use of vacant infill land, the proposed development will be compatible with the surrounding development, given the consistency of its use with surrounding properties residential and the sufficiency of infrastructure, including roadways, as improved by applicant for offered development plan conditions. Looking at the site characteristics review, this is the proposed layout for the development. You can see the green-shaded area that pertains to the portion of the property proposed to be rezoned to RM4 for multifamily residential purposes. The blue-shaded area is the proposed area for the PUD zoning, which would incorporate single-family homes. Under natural features, we have noted that there are several mature trees located around the perimeter of the property. Under cultural or historical features, the existing home on the property was built in 1885. However, it is not a locally designated historic property, nor is it listed on the National Register of Historic Places. Under surrounding density, staff has noted that densities in a quarter of a mile of the property range from 0.07 dwelling units per acre to 17.39 dwelling units per acre with a median density of 3.96 dwelling units per acre and an average density of 4.8. The proposed density for the RM4 portion of the development is 23.09, and the proposed density for the PUD portion of the development is 7.56. The overall density, when you combine both portions of the development, is 15.46 dwelling units per acre. Looking at the surrounding architectural features, buildings in the vicinity range from one to two stories in height. The majority of homes in the area do not have a garage. Homes in the vicinity range from 760 square feet to 2,023 square feet with a median home size of 1,116 square feet. Under building materials review, buildings in the vicinity are a mixture of brick, cement board siding, metal, vinyl, stucco, split-face block, and stone. Several structures utilize plain-face block and split-face block as a foundation material. Looking at page four, we have a reference to the traffic impact study requirements from Section 3.1.4 of the zoning ordinance. A traffic impact study was not required by the Bowling Green Public Works Department and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet in lieu of the following improvements. From Bowling Green Public Works, the developers shall widen Durin-Burger Lane to three lanes at the intersection with Kentucky 185 and shall provide at least 50 feet of left-turn lane stacking. The property's access to Durin-Burger Lane shall be designed and constructed at a 90-degree angle. Durin-Burger Lane shall be widened along the subject property so as to conform to relevant subdivision regulations. The existing pavement on Durin-Burger Lane shall be cored and the pavement improved so that the roadway satisfies design requirements given anticipated added traffic. And from the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet, they have stated that to remove the existing entrance, install a right-turn lane on KY 185 at Durin-Burger Lane. The applicants have agreed to all of these improvements in the development plan conditions. Moving on to the development plan conditions, there were several submitted. I'm gonna go through those briefly. I will note that there is a typo. Number two states that a maximum of 52 single-family residences would be permitted in the PUD portion of the development. It should be 53, off by one number. Other development plan conditions address utility placement, access, building materials, foundation materials, uniform, street lighting, and tree preservation. For the RM4 portion of the development, similar utility placement. Maximum number of units to be limited to 168, no more than eight units per building. Three addresses transportation considerations and the roadway improvements required by the transportation agencies. Four and five, building materials. Six, community mailbox requirement. Seven, uniform street lighting. Eight, tree preservation. Nine, donation of salvageable materials from the existing historic home before it's demolished. Ten, building orientation and location of parking. Eleven, limits the number of floor plans and addresses color uniformity amongst the buildings in the RM4 portion of the development. And twelve, limits building height to no more than two stories. Under the focus 2030 category review, staff evaluated 18 items and determined that five of those items are in compliance, two are out of compliance, and there are 11 items the planning commission should evaluate for compliance. The first being LU 1.1.1 and LU 1.1.2, which look at the future land use map. Next, LU 1.1.3 compatibility. Next, LU 2 and LU 2.1, quality of development and character of the area. LU 211, adequate and, adequate and usable open space. LU 252, compatibility with the proposed infill development. Next, these items do not comply, NCR 25 and NCR 253, due to the demolition of the historic structure that's located on the property. And then next, four more items for you to consider, whether or not these are in compliance. First, HN 1 and HN 1.3. whether or not these are in compliance, uh, first H and one and H and one point three. Whether or not this is a compatible infill development and considerations for the character and pattern of development within the area. And finally, H and two point one and H and four, which look at suitability and variety of housing options. Going to wrap up on page one with our points to consider. First, the planning commission should consider if the argument provided by the applicants to amend the future land use map meets the criteria in LU one point one point four of the comprehensive plan. Second, if the future land use map amendment is approved, the entire proposal would be Flume compliant. Next, the proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria and the review criteria for site design and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. And finally, the planning commission should determine if the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. That is all for the staff report, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Rachel. Uh, commissioners, are there any questions for Rachel and the, uh, proposed development?
Uh, Rachel, uh, Tim Graham here, one, one minor housekeeping item, if I may. Item number five, under the RM four portion of the development plan conditions, uh, seems to be a contradiction. It says neither plain faced nor split faced block shall not be allowed on any structure. Uh, I assume that should be, uh, shall be allowed.
I see what you're saying. Uh, yeah, I think that's, that's just a housekeeping item. I think, and the applicants can clarify. I think it's the intent that split face block and plain face block would not be allowed.
That was my reading, but I just want to clarify and we'll ask the applicant that as well.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions from the commissioners? Uh, is anyone, the, the applicant, uh, Matt Mark, Nick Fuqua, or the representative here tonight?
Chris, we can't hear you.
They can't hear him. He's not muted. There must be something wrong with his mic.
Obviously.
The, uh, the Fuqua is, I have to go on without him.
Do we have any opposition to this?
Uh, I think we have to hear from the applicant first.
Okay.
I see, see Matt Fuqua and Mark Fuqua.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm Matt Fuqua. I'm, I'm on here. I was going to let Chris talk, but I'll be glad to.
All right, uh, Mr. Fuqua, your name and address, please.
Uh, Matt Fuqua, five four three Foxmore Drive, Bowling Green.
And thank you, Mr. Fuqua. You, you swear to tell the truth before this commission?
I do.
And at any time, at any time you want to speak to Mr. Davenport, feel free to, uh, to hand it over to him.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Fuqua, you, you, have you heard the comments tonight? Do you have anything you would like to add? In the presentation from our staff?
Uh, yeah, just the, the only comment, I think you all had a question for me, uh, as it related to foundation being split or, uh, plain face block. Uh, and we do intend to use split face block. Um, we're trying to make this, uh, as affordable as possible and, uh, using, using split place is, is something we wanted to do, not, not plain.
Commissioner Graham, does that answer your question?
Well, we need to clarify then because it, in number five, it says no split face blocks shall be used.
Matt, any, any chance you could hear me now?
There you are, Chris.
I just got out and got back in, so I, I'm, I apologize, commissioners. I'm not sure. I've never had that happen before. Commissioner Graham, the intent is on the RM four development. That should read neither plain face nor split face block shall be used. You're correct when you pointed that out.
Okay, so we are prohibiting split face block on the RM four portion. Is that correct, Chris?
That is correct.
Okay, so, uh, uh, i- if we could, uh, if we could just clarify that, uh, in the, uh, in the text and I'll leave, uh, I'll leave that to the professionals and then, so Chris, that does bring me then back to the general development plan conditions for the P U D portion. If we're not using split face block on the P U D, on the RM four portion, the P U D, uh, the, um, yeah, the P U D portion seems to allow split face block.
It does, Commissioner Graham. And I'll tell you, I, I discussed this with, uh, with Mark Fuqua and Matt as well, uh, as well as, uh, Rachel and staff. Uh, there's two reasons for that. The main reason from a construction standpoint is those single family homes will likely be built on slabs. And the construction maniurism that they want to utilize, and I'm not a construction expert, but I did talk to my clients about this. That's the difference, is the technique they're going to use to build those single family homes. Secondarily, as the staff report notes, uh, I'll, I'll just say, I'm, uh, you know, I discussed this with my clients because I knew particularly Commissioner Graham, you would point, probably point that out. You usually do point that out. But in this area, as the staff report notes, uh, the block foundation is more common than not.
I see.
The most recent single family developments in that area all included. Including, um, across one eighty-five and what I'm, I'm going to call kind of the triangular, uh, area uh, that sits there at the entrance. I think there's a sign for Della Field. Where the old, uh, cow mural is, if you know what I'm talking about, in that area. All those homes were, uh, built on, uh, block foundations. Well, that was rezoned probably, I'm going to say two years ago.
Okay, so, so Chris, just to clarify, if I may, uh, they're proposing to allow split faced, but are they prohibiting plain faced?
Yes.
Number five.
Correct. Of the P U D portion. Of the P U D. Both are disallowed in the RM four portion.
I see. Okay. Uh, thank you for the clarification.
Uh, can, uh, Chris Davenport, will you please read to me D P C number five from the RM four portion, so we can make sure we have that language down perfect. Neither plain face nor split face block shall be allowed on any new structures.
Jessica, are you okay with that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Luckily, we didn't have a triple negative there. Uh, we stopped with a double negative. And, and, and again, normally I would have probably, I, I probably would have said something more. I left Matt completely in a lurch there. But we're looking at about a little over fourteen acres here as I, we put in our application. I feel, I'm, I'm happy I'm bringing an application in this area because it's really been void. You've seen so many single, uh, you know, single family residences and multifamily residences that have been rezoned the last three or four years. And really nothing up in this area. So I, I pointed that out in the application and I feel that way. I think it's a good infill project. It's making use of, uh, vacant land that is extremely close here to our, uh, city center. And for, and for those reasons, we put in the application, we think it's a, it's a good development. A golf course frontage. Golf course frontage. Matt knows a thing or two about golf courses.
Thank you, Chris. Uh, is there any other questions for the commissioners for, for the Fuquas or Mr. Davenport?
Have they talked about a stoplight, traffic light there because of all this new traffic? Or just the proposed add a lane in there?
Now, Commissioner Clark, we did, uh, what, uh, the transportation cabinet city wanted us to do. I, I, I really don't know to what extent, um, we didn't offer that. Basically, we said, what improvements do we need to make here? They wanted that, uh, Durin Burger Lane widened. Um, and they wanted that third lane added and we agreed to do those things.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if they discussed the light too, because that would certainly help over there. Because one eighty-five is such a dangerous road.
Thank you, Sandy. Any other questions for the commissioners for the Fuquas or for Mr. Davenport?
Chair Warren, this is, uh, Commissioner Starks. I have a question for Matt or Chris. Um, and the question is, would this be a one phase or two phase development? Uh, can you comment on that?
Matt, that would be, that would be, uh, in your, uh, your area of expertise, Matt. I know, I don't know how you plan to build this out.
Yeah, I mean, we're, we're kind of going back and forth on it. Um, I, I guess to be determined, but, uh, two phases is absolute most.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Rick. Any other comments for the applicants?
Chair Warren, I have one item to clarify, if you don't mind.
Yes, ma'am.
Chris, I had sent you an email late this afternoon. I don't know if you received that or not. It was last minute as I was reviewing the staff report. In reference to development plan condition four, for the P U D portion of the development. Is it the intent that all structures adhere to those material requirements or would that only be for primary residential structure?
That's the, the intent is that, for that to apply to all structures.
The fifty percent.
Uh, the exteriors with the vinyl, brick, ether, stone or hardy board.
Got it.
Commissioners, any other comments? Include, I, I'm sorry, uh,
Go ahead, Chris. I mean, yeah.
I was just indicating, it does include, it does indicate all structures currently. Is that?
It does. I think, I think Rachel's question is whether we intended that to be limited to primary structures and exclude accessory structures, but that, that was not their intent.
So no change. Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr. Graham. Commissioners, any other comments? Is there anyone in the audience tonight that has questions regarding this project?
There are none.
I'm sorry, Ben.
I do not see any. There are no.
Oh, thank, thank you. Yes, yes. So, uh, hearing no, no comments or questions, we are voting on two amendments tonight. The Flume Amendment and then the zoning map amendment change. So call for a motion from our commissioners.
Make a motion to approve the, uh, proposed future land use map amendment, docket number twenty twenty-one oh three Flume. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed Flume Amendment has met the criteria to amend the Flume as outlined in LU one point one point four in the comprehensive plan. Further, our request, this motion includes summary of evidence, the testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Jessica?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner War- excuse me, Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you all. And our next, uh, uh, motion to this is the zone change amendment. Do I hear a motion, please?
I make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment, together with condition upon the general development plan, docket number twenty twenty-one oh six Z B G. Based upon the testimony and documents presented in this public hearing, the proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus twenty thirty comprehensive plan as demonstrated by its compliance with the objectives and action items presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, our request, this motion includes summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Second. Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Ritchie?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Starks?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Unseld?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Blackburn?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Warren.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Ben, do we have any new business for tonight?
Jessica, I think you left me out.
I am so sorry. Commissioner Clark?
Yes, please.
Sorry about that, Sandy.
That's okay.
Is there any new business for tonight, Ben?
I'll just mention a couple of quick things. Uh, city commission retreat is January twenty-ninth and, uh, they have asked me to represent, uh, proposed zoning ordinance amendments, uh, that we did, uh, several months ago. So I think they're moving towards, uh, considering those, which is a good thing. We've been operating under kind of under two, two different zoning ordinances for about six months or so now. So, uh, hopefully we can get that, uh, uh, moving along again. The second thing is just a quick update on the proposed, uh, PC makeup or the planning, the changes to the planning commission joint agreement. Uh, both the city of Bowling Green and Warren County Fiscal Court have approved those changes. Uh, Woodburn had their second, uh, reading earlier this week and, uh, voted down those changes. Um, the, uh, Palm Springs and Oakland, uh, uh, will vote next week on their first readings. And Smith Grove will have their first reading on January twenty-fifth. Since Woodburn voted, uh, those changes down, uh, I don't, don't really know what that means. Could mean a, a number of things. I don't think there's been much discussion, uh, about it yet. But, uh, we'll keep you up to date as we, as we go along.
Thank you, Ben. We appreciate our staff and all that you all do and, uh, keeping everything going forward. Appreciate all the commissioners being here tonight and those that, uh, don't feel well. We hope you get to feel better. And, uh, thank you for a long night and your service to the community. So we are adjourned. Thank you.